Hello, everybody.
Go ahead, Mike.
Ready to start?
Yes.
Hello, welcome to the Town of Monroe regular meeting for January the 18th, 2024. It is now 7:03 PM. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. As you all know, this meeting will be conducted in part via electronic equipment remotely as I am doing now. We'll next call the role, starting with Dominic.
Dominic Smiglino, alternate.
Dominic Benetia, alternate.
Ryan Condon, Commissioner.
Leanne Brozzi, Commissioner.
Bruno Mayini, Commissioner.
Robert Westland, Commissioner.
Nicole DuPaul, Alternate Commissioner.
Kevin Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's start with general public participation. If there are any members of the public that would like to address the commission for any reason that is not before the commission tonight, this is the time to do that. Please raise your hand.
I would like to. I'm sorry, I'm not on video, but I will be in a second, I hope. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mrs. Lindstrom.
Yes, hello. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Um, I was just following up on my recent request for information on the status of the updates on zoning enforcement. And now that we have a new planning administrator, could you tell me what percentage of her time will be spent, or I could ask her directly, what percentage of her time will be spent on enforcement in addition to her other duties?
Answering. Uh, you're just talking about in general, not in relationship to any particular project, correct?
Um, I have a long list of particular projects, but I'll hold it to just in general for right now.
So we do have a zoning enforcement officer. She does take the lead on zoning enforcement. However, I am there to assist for clarification as well as to assist in helping with the workload as it relates to the percentage of time. I unfortunately don't have an exact percentage for you. Um, but I am happy to discuss with you any particular projects that you feel are need emphasis or interest.
Okay, can I make an appointment to see you in your office? That would probably be the best thing to do.
Absolutely.
Or should I see her? Which of you should I meet with?
Let's start with me. Make a, make a appointment with me and then I'll help direct you based on what your concerns are.
Okay, I can do that. And have you been, have you been receiving regular reports, Michael, from, from the zoning enforcement officer?
Yes, I do receive regular reports.
Okay, and is that information that is available to the public that we could see?
I don't know if it's available.
Okay. I, I would think it should be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindstrom. Do we have any other members of the public online or in person that would like to address the commission at this time? Commissioner Mayini, I can't, is anyone?
Uh, there was a, there's a hand for Wally 1.
There's nobody in public, but there's somebody online.
Okay, Wally 1.
Oh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I was just wondering if you could provide an update on what's going on with the changes to the, uh, the correction that was supposed to be made with minimal parcel sizes with the special districts.
I apologize. Can you start with your name and address just for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Wally Thomas, Three Wheeler Road.
Um, I apologize that I am several weeks into a new position. Um, and I don't have an answer for you for that exact item, but I will look into it. So your concern has to do with minimum size for the special design districts?
Well, I mean, the, the board had be, because of what had happened with Starbucks and then was followed up with again with O'Reilly's. And there was supposed to be a correction to the special districts. Um, and if I remember correctly, at the meeting, there even to be, it seemed to be some confusion. They thought it was passed and then no, it has to go to hearings and such. I'm just wondering where that stands.
I unfortunately do not have an update for you, uh, but I will look into your concerns and we'll see what the next steps are.
Okay, um, and, and just also, there was another one out of curiosity that the board was working with for definitions for kitchen and wet bars. Did that ever go anywhere? That sat in the minutes for months.
Uh, that's currently in a draft format at the moment. Um, is on the list of regulations to be reviewed.
Okay.
But it has started to progress, but I don't have an approval for you of that to be incorporated into the regulations at this moment.
Okay, is that another thing that will have to actually go to a public hearing as well?
Uh, that is something that has to be approved. And yeah, I believe it has to go to a public hearing. I don't believe the public hearing has been set on that yet. My understanding is that a draft has been formed. It's been circulated internally. It's not into the final position of yet that is comfortable to be in a public hearing, but that would be the next step.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
So anyone else online or in person that would like to comment or address the commission at this time?
Nobody here, Mike.
If not, then we'll go on to our first public hearing of the night. ZCA slash REA 2023 dash 12. That's two or five Monroe Turnpike. Kathleen, do we have any updates on, on the exhibits?
Yes, since our last meeting, we have had, uh, letters from the Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments stating that the proposed action is not regionally significant. We have received a letter from the town of Trumbull stating that they do not see any negative impact to the town of Trumbull. Um, we also received a letter from the Conservation, um, and Water Commission requesting, uh, they had asked for a green roof or a full roof to reduce the Green Island effect. They're requesting additional trees around the wetland areas on the west side of the parking area. Uh, additional plantings, particularly shrubs and ground cover on the slopes and around the wetland area, and to replace the non-native plants with native plants. Uh, we've also received a revised draft regulation prepared by Solly Engineering, uh, dated January 17, 2024. And I believe we're having a little bit of a loop feedback. It might be, uh, Mike, your computer and your dial-in are conflicting.
Much better.
And that's the end of the exhibits.
Okay, thank you. And I believe, uh, Mr. Solly is here for the applicant. He is here. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solly, licensed professional engineer and state candidate with Solly Engineering. Office is located right here in Monroe at 501 Main Street. Um, so as the commission may recall, uh, we discussed this application's proposed regulation amendment the last hearing. Um, we had, I think we had some good, robust discussion. We did leave the hearing open so we could receive the feedback from the town of Trumbull and MetroCog, which we think we received. Um, we just also heard about some feedback from the Conservation, uh, Commission, which we hadn't previously heard, but I think everything that they had identified in their letter are certainly things that we could address as part of the next state step of this, uh, application process. Um, which, which again, this, what we have for the commission to see names of regulation amendment to create the special development district. Once this is, uh, if this is accepted, um, you know, this is being favored by the commission, our next step would be a formal application to the Wetlands Commission and planning zoning. Um, and we have a dismission for the formal S and P approval. Um, and I think the comments raised by Conservation are certainly going to be part of those more detailed applications. This is simply the master plan, regulation. The next step is the detailed, um, site plan design. I know we, we talked about a number of other things at the last hearing regarding potential architectural improvements, things like that, enhancements. And again, I think all those things are appropriate to be dealt with at the, um, uh, at the S and P, uh, application process as we go through the details, that detailed review. Um, as, uh, Kathleen mentioned, we did provide a, a revision to the, the SBD language. It was really just to address the loading spaces. I think if you remember at the last hearing, we discussed, um, there was a comment from the town engineer regarding the number of loading spaces. Um, based on your current code, uh, this site would require, or the size of the building would require four loading spaces, but because of the operation, again, it's a multi-story or would be a multi-story climate-controlled storage facility, it would actually be four from an operation standpoint. So we did add that to the special development district language. Um, and with that, I think, uh, I think we've been able to address, you know, the comments raised and discussed at the last hearing. Um, we've gotten notice from MetroCog and the town of Trumbull. And I think unless there's any other questions by the commission, we respectfully request the commission close the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Solly. Uh, you'll start with Kathleen with, do you have any additional information on this?
I had a chance to review the updated, uh, text, uh, text, and they did make the changes that were requested in my last memo. Um, as was already mentioned, yes, I agree that we've received, uh, the two, uh, response to comments from Trumbull and MetroCog, which is what we were waiting for the, for the last item. Um, and so from our perspective, uh, we agreed that the Conservation Board's comments are things that can be addressed during the special exception permit process and don't need to be addressed at this time.
Okay, then we'll go with the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Lufo.
I'll move this time.
I have this. Yeah, that's all. No questions. No plan.
I have no question.
Yeah.
Because you, um, remember we were talking about, um, what you can have aside that those store, you know, you could put that into a
Well, we didn't put it into the special development district language because we think that would be better handled as a condition of approval for the special exception permit. So this, so that would be the next step. And I think that would be, I think that was kind of how that was handled on potentially previous applications. Um, uh, for a similar type of use, and we, you know, suppose that we handle that as part of the national approval at the next step.
Okay, so you don't think it's, we should put that in? What we want in there, we don't want in there?
I, I think that's more appropriate to put in as part of that special exception program conditions, uh, because that's going to deal more with the specific site plan, operation of the facility. Um, I think that would be a more appropriate place to apply those restrictions.
Okay. No questions. No questions.
No questions.
All right, are there any members of the public that have any, uh, comments on this application? If so, now is the time to raise your hand, uh, whether in person or online.
Mike, we have none.
Okay, seeing none, then, um, we'll go back to Mr. Solly. I believe he wants to close the hearing.
Uh, yes, according to the shade, uh, boards can consider it.
Those are. Back to you, Mike.
Okay, we're going to hereby close the hearing and move on to our second hearing.
Got to wait on that.
The second hearing is
I left my notebook. I get to drop it out.
Second hearing, SUB 2023 dash oh four one two seven three C, 127 Main Street. Um, this is also a continuation from 1424, and it's also, um, Mr. Solly.
Would you like to have the exhibits?
Although any updated exhibits?
Yes, we have since the last meeting. Uh, we've entered just the certified receipts into the record. We've also received, uh, revised, uh, applications of plans, which include the response to engineering comments, a subdivision ownership letter, a subdivision map prepared by accurate land surveying, and a site development plan, um, a revised one prepared by Solly Engineering, last revised, uh, 24.
Okay, thank you. And go ahead, Mr. Solly.
Good evening, members of the commission. Again, for the record, my name is Kevin Solly. I'm a licensed professional engineer and state candidate with Solly Engineering. Office is located right here in Monroe at 501 Main Street. Um, so, uh, since the last hearing, we obviously did the application for these for subdivision of 127 Main Street. Um, this is the site that was previously approved for a, as a special development district for, uh, multi-family, uh, development. Um, we did provide, in response to the discussion at the last hearing, in response to engineering comments, we did provide information to staff. Um, I will say we will provide that recently, and I know that, um, you know, staff do not have a chance to add it, at least, at least the engineer. Um, so I think actually, considering that, I'd actually be willing to leave the hearing open for one more meeting, just so we can actually continue to work with staff, make sure they have adequate time to review materials, and I think we can actually hopefully go through a more detailed presentation at the next meeting and close this out at the, the first meeting in February.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, Kathleen, do you have anything to add?
Uh, just the, yes, we did receive the information, uh, later in the day, I believe, yesterday. So staff has not had a chance to review it. Um, but we will. My only outstanding information, um, request is just about the open space. So they are proposing open space, uh, that is congruent with the already existing conservation effort for the property. Um, it is a little landlocked, lack of a better term. Um, the question to the commission is just, is there any reason that you would want to allow access to that portion of the property, either for maintenance or other reasons? That we would have to put some sort of provision, um, into the subdivision to allow the town access into it. At the moment, you would be crossing private property. Um, so you're creating a, you know, a portion of the land that, uh, would be deeded for the town. Um, but wouldn't have access except for, uh, through private property. So we'd want to make sure there's some sort of provision for the town that you have access to it or that the public has access to it. I'll leave it to the commission to review that.
Right, and, and since, um, Kathleen and I was able to have a conversation with Mary from my office kind of late today. That's why I actually came up here tonight. I think I probably surprised Kathleen with, with requesting to leave it open because I want to be able to work with staff. Make sure they're comfortable with what, what, you know, this specific issue, I think we can certainly provide an access easement. And actually, there's a portion of the land adjacent to the closed conservation or exposed open space. It's actually currently disturbed, which could actually cer- certainly provide some, some place of location for that and formalize that as part of maybe additional easement on the subdivision. So that's, that's the reason why I wanted to continue to work with staff.
Okay, let's go to the commissioners for questions, starting with Commissioner Lufo.
No questions.
My questions for staff, um, are there, is it typical or are there always required, um, access to these open space parcels?
So the way the code reads is that, um, open space shall, shall abut or have direct access to a public street unless such open space is proposed to be merged with an existing preserved open space parcel that has existing suitable street frontage and access as determined by the commission. So this doesn't have, this isn't abutting a street, it is abutting the private entrance driveway into the site. Um, so if you want to provide some sort of access, and again, it's, it's already using existing conservation easements, so they're putting open space in a location that makes the most sense. Uh, you would have to provide some sort of access easement to be able to get yourself access, um, to it. And there's methods of protection, um, written in the, in the, um, regulations. Uh, legal instruments designed to ensure that the open space shall be preserved in perpetuity. Um, and then you can also, you know, uh, do something, uh, from a legal standpoint to make sure that there's accessibility as well.
How much open space are we talking about here?
Thank you.
I want to make sure I'm speaking.
It's about 2.3 plus or minus acres. Um, it ends up being about 12% of the site based on the revised regulations for, um, the special design district. Uh, our normal regulations are 15%. It was reduced down to 5%, um, so they're exceeding it. Um, and then they are required to do 50% of usable open space. Um, however, they're, they're providing 50% of the 5% of usable open space, um, which does make sense. We don't want them to reduce the amount of open space because they don't have additional usable area. If we have more wetlands, we would like them to include it in there. Um, so staff is acceptable with that, um, interpretation of how to calculate it.
Is there a reasonable alternate place to put this, uh? Or would you rather go with an easement?
Um, I think we're comfortable with the easement because we want to make sure that, um, as Kathleen mentioned, that, that, that we get that, you know, usable area.
Yeah.
Um, there's certainly other, you know, lands on the site that could be included, but again, there's a lot of its wet. And then I think even those other areas actually along 25 are already protected under conservation easement. It's just not being part of what's being deeded. So there are actually a lot of protection measures built in for, I think, what the intent, the goal of space dedication is. We just simply want to make sure that, uh, um, you know, where we have it, and it's, and it's a very short segment of the driveway that will lead right up to a potential access point. So I think if we can, we can work through that with staff, actually show that easement and show it dedicated, we should be able to satisfy the requirements of the regulations.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
No questions.
Did you, um, see this from the inner wetlands about maintenance of the detention on?
We did, yes.
Land for that?
Well, we, we, we already have as part of a special exception permit.
Yeah.
Um, uh, provisions for stormwater maintenance, uh, there's, um, that's part of the operations of the stormwater management system.
Yeah.
So that was actually all incorporated and included as part of the special exception, uh, granted. Again, this application is simply for the subdivision, so all this is doing is creating the parcels. There's no physical work proposed as part of this. The drainage improvements were already approved previously, so it doesn't necessarily, I, I don't think it necessarily relates to the management of the stormwater system. But again, we actually built all those protection measures in that maintenance plan and as part of the special exception part.
Right, but I think they were just looking at who's going to maintain it and how it's going to be maintained.
Correct, and actually that was identified in the, the narrative that we provided. So as part of our response to comments, we provided a narrative regarding the declaration which will accompany the subdivision plan from a, from a filing standpoint. And that is in your packet. I mean, I could read it to the commission tonight, but
No, no, I just wanted to make sure.
It is addressed, yes. Stormwater management and the inclusion of it is, is included in that narrative. It will be included in the declaration.
Yeah, I got that. Okay, all right, thanks.
No question.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to leave this hearing open then.
Yes.
Before we, uh, move on, we're just going to allow the public, um, any members of the public here tonight like to comment on this application. Please raise your hand or if online, please raise your hand. Uh, seeing none, then we will, um, move on and leave this hearing open until, um, our first meeting in February.
Thank you.
And, uh, moving on, we have a third public hearing tonight, ZCA slash REA 2024 dash oh one, 515 and 517 Main Street. Commissioner Condon, do you have the notice?
We are actually missing 604. We skipped over 604 Main Street.
All right, we'll go back to 604 Main Street. That's SCP 2024 dash oh one, uh, 604 Main Street. Also, this is a, um, opening hearing, Commissioner Condon.
In accordance with SCP 777, our public hearing will be on Thursday, January 18, 12:00 PM. Or soon thereafter, it will be a hybrid Zoom meeting with in-person attendees at Monroe Town Hall Council Chambers, SCP 2024 zero one five one six six zero A, 604 Main Street, 590 Main Street. Special exception permit application for a proposed automotive repair and used car sales facility located at 604 Main Street, 590 Main Street, accessory map 3282, 957, lot 070 slash 075. Diageo Barone owner, Faras Samander, uh, applicant. This was published twice in voices on Wednesday, January 3rd and January 10th.
Okay, Kathleen, do you have any additional, um, exhibits?
Uh, exhibits submitted for this application include, uh, the special exception permit application, wetland and water course map by Will and Kenny Associates, a GIS map, a project narrative, the aquarium noticing, floor plans, and topographic survey prepared by Lewis Associates dated October 13th, 2023. In addition, the town of Monroe Health Department, um, has submitted comments. The town engineer has submitted comments. Uh, the Conservation Board has also submitted comments, and I also wrote a planning and zoning, um, administrator report. Uh, once we've had a chance to review, uh, to get the initial presentation, I'll go into some of the details of what was written in that report, but let's give you guys an overall understanding of the project first.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, for the applicant, who do we have tonight?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Faras Samander, uh, applicant for 604 Main Street. I'm applying for a special exception permit for a, um, repair shop and accessory use as, uh, sales for new vehicles. Um, there will be no changes to the property exterior or interior. We will operate the way it is. Um, and just waiting for you guys if you have anything to discuss with me.
Okay, um, Kathleen, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Uh, so the project is located at 604 Main Street. Uh, the history of that site is that it was previously used as an auto repair shop. It's in a B1 zone, which does not permit an auto repair shop, an auto body shop, an auto sale shop. However, because it is a grandfathered use, an auto repair shop is permitted. Um, this due to the legality of it being a grandfathered use, and we have legal counsel's opinion on that as related to seeing a collision, um, and we do have that, you know, in our files. In a B2 district, which is not where this is at, in a B2 district, auto repair shops are permitted to have an accessory use of auto sales up to three cars. However, because this is in a B1 district, the regulations are not permitting the accessory use to transfer with the use. So from a planning and zoning administrative, we believe that the applicant is going to have to get a variance in order to allow an accessory use of automobile sales to be able to use this in this zone, since automobile sales is not a permitted principal or accessory use, um, in any capacity. In addition to that, it's very clear that the amount of cars to be sold is up to three cars. We would also be requesting that they get a variance in order to have the eight cars in the rear of the lot, which is what they're proposing. They're proposing to have three in the front and eight in the back. Um, it was discussed at subcommittee, uh, the possibility of that being used as outdoor storage. The outdoor storage code also, uh, talks about only being 20% of the, uh, principal square footage, which would only allow them three cars. Um, so either way, they would have to go get a variance in order to be able to have the cars in the rear of the property. Uh, we would also be asking that they provide screening. Uh, there's a series of pine trees in the back around a small landscaped island. Uh, there's obviously a gap between, uh, the bottom branches of the trees, um, and the grass area. There's a residence behind there, so we'd be asking for them just to allow, uh, just to provide some screening with some, um, from a planning and zoning administration with some additional screening. Um, just for reference, in the past, uh, the zoning board of appeals has been required to approve, um, a, approval of location for any sort of automobile repair, sales, uh, shop. That law, from a GIP, from a state perspective, changed as of July 1st of this year. And in order for them to get their repairs license from the DMV commissioner, they now only have to get the approval from a zoning enforcement officer. So in the past, um, an auto sales and auto repair shop, in order to get their, uh, licenser, uh, licensees, uh, repair licenser certificate from the commissioner for the DMV, they would have to get something, um, from the zoning board of appeals. That is no longer, uh, a requirement as of July 1st, so we will not be requiring them to go through that process. Um, we discussed it before, uh, they're an auto repair shop. We assume they'll be doing oil changes, correct? Um, they have looked in the facility. There are no floor drains, um, in the facility. That was a concern that there was drains in the floor, which would be affecting oil as it gets, um, put into whatever it was connected to at that time, either stormwater system or not. Um, and so from that perspective, the engineering comment letter has no comments because that was his main concern, which was clarified. Uh, we did receive comments, um, from the Conservation and Water Resource Commission. Um, they are concerned about runoff going into the wetlands in the rear. The wetlands in the rear is 180 feet away from the property, so it does not have to be reviewed by wetlands. It is outside of the upland review area. Um, so their concerns are just to add, uh, any sort of additional planting as well as curbing. Uh, they're just concerned about the water runoff that comes into that area. Um, and then, uh, the health department, they're concerned is the existing subsurface sewage disposal system. They would like it to be located and inspected to determine the capacity of the system. If it's in violation with the setbacks, and if it is in violations with the setbacks, um, a new subsurface sewage disposal system, uh, would need to be installed. So from the So from the commission's perspective tonight, um, I do believe that they have to go to the zoning board of appeals to get variances, uh, just because the, uh, sales is not a permitted accessory use in the B one district. Um, but we would like to hear from the commission tonight. Um, I think the applicant would like to hear from the commission tonight. Um, your just general understanding of the project and your feel of the project, uh, to make sure that their efforts to go through the additional, um, these additional requirements, uh, would still be favorable upon the board if they came back to the board afterwards.
Okay, let's start with, uh, Commissioner Lupo. Any questions?
Yeah, can you just explain to me, does, I know, you know, auto repair, auto, um, um, can't think of the word. Explain a little bit about what kind of repairs you're going to be doing there or expect to be doing there.
Sure, so it's going to be light work. Uh, it's going to be mostly, uh, all changes to enough spray suspension diagnostics. I will not be doing any transmission or engine jobs, anything big like that. Um, so it's, it's almost going to be like, uh, express lanes, so people come in and out at almost the same time period.
Will there be any work done where cars will have to be stored overnight?
Um, it, it might happen once in a while if, if there's a part that's on backwater or so. Uh, but it's not necessarily a thing that I'm hoping for, but it, it could, I think it could be a rare, uh, you know, situation.
So Kathleen, is there anything in the, um, rights about overnight putting out the cars outside and how many are allowed?
Again, it's for a B two district, so in a B two district, no vehicle shall be stored outside with the exception of one facility service vehicle and no more than seven customer vehicles scheduled for repair or service. So again, the code allows in a B two district, um, where you have a permitted accessory sales use, the ability to store cars.
Um, outside of the oil changes, are there any other fluids that you would be using? I said, you know, no transmissions, but any other fluids that might be needing to be disposed of?
Uh, sure, cool. Uh, um, which we have, uh, tanks, two, two seventy five gallon tanks. Uh, I do have a, uh, waste oil heater as well that will be getting to the shop, so all the oil that comes out, comes, uh, out of the vehicle to go into there, so we can eat the shop.
Um, you know, if this gets approved, do you have, um, plans for the hours for the shop, the days you'd be working?
Absolutely. It'll be, uh, Monday through, uh, Saturday. Sunday will be off. Um, it's going to be nine to six.
Um, no other questions right now. Thank you.
Well, it looks like you have an uphill battle here with the variant situation. Um, I feel like, you know, the town does need a good option for a place to buy vehicles. Um, have you located the current septic system on the property as of now?
Um, I've just gotten this notice today, actually, this morning, so I haven't, but I know that, uh, the landlord just did the whole, um, survey for the property and had to discuss with the landlord today. We're willing to do whatever it takes to, you know, make sure that's okay.
Did, uh, did it appear as though the septic system met the setback requirements at this point?
I'm not sure. It exists. I think you get our permission.
Okay, that's all I have. Uh, you said you're not going to do any engine work or any of that kind of stuff. Uh, what about tires?
Uh, it's not going to be the main, I'm not going to advertise tires. If somebody wants to come in to get tires, then sure.
Are you going to have room to store the old ones inside?
Uh, there's plenty of room in the back. There, there are three bays in the front. There's one big bay in the back, that's it.
Cause I don't think a lot of that stuff, I don't think that's.
And there are racks, tire racks already existing in the building, uh, from the previous, uh, tire.
Uh, any bodywork going to be done there?
No.
Uh, let me take my subject question. I'm good. Did you come up with a plan of a layout for the building where you're going to put?
Inside or outside?
Inside.
Uh, as we discussed in the last meeting, I don't think that was something that was, uh, uh, discussed for me to provide.
Well, you would have to provide it for us to find out where you're going to have your storage for your oil, your antifreeze. You have to have certain places that we're going to store. The other thing is, you may not use all the like you said, you're going to burn it. Please oil heater, but how many gallon tank are you going to have for waste oil?
Two seventy five. I have, uh, safety clean company, uh, not disposal any oil, that's, uh, that's extra.
Extra, right, so that's fine. You, you need to come up with some kind of plan for what you're going to do inside the building, storage and stuff like that, I mean. The other thing is like, as she's saying, that, you know, you're in a neighborhood, so you're going to have to, like, um, create some kind of, uh, barrier from a neighbor behind and stuff like that. And then a used car thing, I, I, I don't think that you're going to be able to get a used car license here, but I think under general repairs, you could sell a couple of cars a month. I didn't look up this, uh, regulation, but I believe that you could sell a couple of cars under general repairs. So I didn't know if you.
Yeah, so what, what is the question exactly?
Well, I'm saying you're trying to go for a used car license. I don't, I don't think that you're going to end up, I don't know if there.
I mean, the stay is not, that has nothing to do with the stay. As long as you're asking me, okay, it should be okay, as long as the, the location in the zone, um, is.
No, I understand, but it's in a B one zone. I'll allow that in a B one zone. It is already, this is already like a pre-existing thing. That's why it's there.
Right.
Because it was there before that, that zone.
Right.
And that's why it's there. But if it's in a B one zone, we're not here to spot zone and change it for a different zone. That is not part of the zone.
No, that's what I'm requesting a special exception permit for.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So I'm like saying it's hard for us to, you know, just say, okay, we're going to give it to you.
Yeah.
What about the people that are next door, another guy down the road a little bit? And if he wants to do it, or guy across the street wants to do it, he wants to sell used cars, and we give it to you. We're just, we have to change the whole zone in order to do that. And I don't think that the commission has looked at the zone. Cause I think how far is a B one run there?
It runs up, I, I mean, it's B one on either side, running.
B one sides.
And then it's residential to the rear.
Residential in the rear, so, I mean, it's not zoned for that.
Certainly.
And, and it's pre-existing because it's been there, but it's a repair shop a long time ago. And then it turned into a tire shop, then now you're coming in trying to put a used car shop there, you know, get the used car license. And it's not you, because I know what you're going to do, you say you're going to do, but it goes with the property. You approve it, it stands with the property. You sell the property, you move on, you don't rent anymore, uh, used by a car's license stays there. And you're saying you're going to sell three, but then this other guy come in and try to sell ten or fifteen, so it's, it's currently be a problem.
So the avenue of which we've suggested is he would have to get a variance for the accessory use. And then he would have to get a variance for the number of cars. Because like you said, the accessory use is permitted in a B two district, uh, for a repair shop, but only up to three cars.
That's all I have.
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Uh, you said it was nine to six, uh, separation?
Right.
Kind of staff do you have?
I have at least, uh, one to two technicians, and I'll have, uh, one person help me as well. You know, do an administrative work.
And you have one bay?
I have a total of three bays. I'll be operating, uh, two lifts. Uh, I might have an alignment machine, I'm not sure yet, but.
Have a what?
I might have an alignment machine.
Okay.
Not a hundred percent sure, I'm still.
Thank you.
All my questions were answered already.
All right, great, then let's go to the, um, public as this is. Any members of the public, uh, in the room tonight that have any questions, uh, please raise your hand, and I'm going to have, um, Vice Chairman Mayini run this portion of the public hearing. Come on up.
Sir, can you just, thank you. Name and record for the.
Sure, I'm Sue Benan. I live at twenty five Bart Road.
Thank you.
And I am the first house, um, on the left as you head up Bart Road, and I'm here representing some of the concerned neighbors. But first, I have a question for clarification. It's my understanding that a special exception permit can be issued in a B one district. Is that correct?
A special exception permit is, if you look in the use table based on the zone, the, based on the proposed new, in the zone.
Right.
Yeah, so a special exception permit can be given in multiple zones.
Right, I understand that, but the table that I'm looking at for B one does not allow special exception permit for auto body, excuse me, automobile service shops and automobile sales.
Correct, so this was already an existing auto repair shop.
I understand that.
So the use is grandfathered?
I, it's my understanding, though, that a, a pre-existing non-compliance is gone out here after the business has vacated.
The way that abandonment is written in the code is that a termination does have to be made. So if a use is vacated for a certain amount of time, uh, the zoning enforcement officer, I believe, has jurisdiction. And, and we can read exactly in the code, but there is a portion in the code that talks about abandonment and what determines it to be vacant. If for some reason it was used for another use for any reason, even for a short period of time, you abandoned that original use. We did get, uh, consult from legal as it considered the repair use for C M collision when that was due, when that was, um, in front of the board.
Right.
And they did determine that this was considered to be a grandfathered use based on their history of the site, um, and the history of, of how it's been used since.
So then you are not looking to change the zoning from B one to B two because that would be spot something?
Correct, we are not looking to change the zoning from B one to B two. It is problematic in the regulations because all that's permitted is an auto repair from a grandfather use. There's nothing in the B one zone that permits it or permits accessory use, which is why we're asking for the applicant, he would have to get a variance because it is a deviation from the zoning regulations.
Okay, so even if this were an S B two district, the permission for, uh, the sale of used vehicles would allow for only six vehicles. The applicant is looking for eleven spots.
Correct, even, so i- it, to make it a little more comparable, if it was an S, if it was a B one, B two district, if it was a B two district, the sale is only of three cars. So that's why he would also have to get a variance for the number of cars that he would want to store on the lot for sale purposes.
Okay, so that's eleven cars he's looking to store.
That is my understanding is that the eleven cars that are shown on the plans are reserved for sales.
So obviously the neighbors are concerned. We're concerned that the, uh, the screening would be sufficient or insufficient. We're concerned that the, that number of cars behind that building is an eyesore to us who live on Bart Road and certainly the property that is directly behind it. Uh, we also feel that we have at this point in time proposed about places to buy used cars between Valine Oil and, uh, six oh four Main Street currently. There are seven automobile businesses, um, that either do service and or sales. Sales including at Monroe Auto Sales, Rob's Auto and Used Cars. Monroe Rough, Monroe Muffler and Brake sells used cars. Hill and Dale Service sells used cars. There's Auto Kingdom Service almost directly across the street from this property. And if you want to go further down to the, um, auto body shop town mind, in a two and a half mile span of room twenty five, we currently have eight automobile businesses. And I'm not sure why we need a ninth. One, number two, we're concerned about property values and the, just the character of that planner. I understand that the property lends itself to an auto shop. I would hope that maybe more creative planning might find a better use for it, but I understand an auto repair shop. But we take issue with the number of cars that would be, are outside and around that facility, but this is a used car sales.
You, you can, you can answer the questions, okay?
Do you?
You can answer the questions after she's done.
Oh, got it, got it.
Thanks. Um, anyway, so it's, it's for those reasons, it also brought concern about the runoff regarding the waters as well. So we're concerned about that, uh, for all the reasons above, and we, you know, post the change or the variance and some to permit.
Thank you.
Yes, well, actually, hold on, first things first.
Sure.
You've only addressed the commission?
Sure.
You never address him? He's not going to address you?
Me, I was just being polite.
Yeah, thank you for your.
We're going to have all the public speak and then he'll get to respond after.
Yes.
Anybody else in the public?
All right, right, take them.
No, come on up. I am an address for the record.
So my name is Elizabeth Binder.
I'm sorry, can you just wait till you.
I can't. You really define me. I am in E R, three Vincent truck. So I'm at forty five degrees. I don't appreciate that you really think we need another auto business. I think you're a little biased. Nice, okay, but it really bothered me because I agree with everything my neighbors said. I am in a low spot in the neighborhood. I get everybody's trouble. Town's never done anything to redress that. I don't look forward to, I know it was an auto apartment. I knew didn't twenty years ago or twenty five years ago, not exaggerating. But I don't look forward honestly to the ice work. I don't think it's going to bring any value to my property. It's going to lower the value of my property. If you think it's going to raise the value, please do a spot and show me, if I can to see it. But when I think about this going on, and I've never been in front of you guys before, since the first, because when I drive up and down twenty five, honestly, I see easy car stores, they're not attractive. And I just think it really pulls neighborhood down, makes it look a little depressed in my view. I don't think allowing or changing the zoning, what you knew you bought or you're renting, you shouldn't have to change the zone. Because when I moved into my home, I didn't ask you to change the zone. So I don't think it's fair to the neighbors, and that's how I feel about it. Sorry to get a little nervous because I'm very passionate.
You're doing great.
Town of Monroe. I was planning on staying in the town of Monroe. Um, but these decisions that you all are making really make it difficult because it doesn't make it a charming neighborhood. There was a time when you can go up and down Monroe on a Sunday. It was dead, and it was great. Now, there's so much traffic, you can't get in and out of shopping centers, seriously. You're putting in two hundred and fifty apartments. I know I missed that one. I didn't comment, okay? Are you kidding me? You cannot get up and down Main Street. It's not fair to the people that really want to raise families in Monroe. I moved to Monroe to live in a more rural area. And it just seems to me that you keep making exceptions and zoning changes. And you know what? I'd really like to see you publish what you think to future Monroe is because people keep people like myself moving in. But I want to be a good neighbor. I see my poor neighbors just bought the house that's adjacent to your lot. And it's, it's doing demoralizing, I do determine who it really is, and I do hope that our voices are heard. Otherwise, you know what? You didn't rent the right spot. You didn't buy the right spot, and we shouldn't have to change our lifestyles, change the zoning to accommodate someone because they want to make more money in business that doesn't belong there, okay? And then my property value should go down for my quality of life. Because there's no guarantee that I can tell from you guys that that runoff isn't going to be on my property. Well, take a look. I, I recorded it. I've sent pictures to town hall in the past because I've gotten flooded. We put in best in backyards, right? Great facility. Do you know that those lights are in my window all night? All night? I didn't want to make an argument about it. I know that there's something in the zoning about the lighting, right? But you should go off my backyard. It's like being on a roadway. I'm not exaggerating, right? So I don't want that situation with this gentleman or any other business. Um, that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Mary Orsillo. I live at one thirty six Stanley Road. Um, I have two concerns. One is the amount of special exception and variances that go on in town in general. It seems like anytime anyone comes in for business, and I'm not against business, we need business. But people always seem to ask for, or very frequently ask for a change in the current regulations. And I just hope we keep in mind that we have those regs for a reason, and they shouldn't constantly be changed. That's my one thing. My second thing is, I would be very concerned about the number of cars if it turns into a, um, used car facility, quite frankly. Um, and I realize they would have to go to, the applicant would have to go to zoning board of appeals and jump through many hoops to maybe have this happen. Um, aesthetics, that's the third thing I'm concerned about. No offense to anybody, but I think, you know, repair shops are not known for their meat necessarily, and they're, they're good looks. But I think if we can encourage that, again, with screening with, um, I don't think there's a lot of room there for a lot of extra parts or sets of tires or whatever. I'm not in that business. Um, but I think all those things need to be considered. Um, the Stepney side, and I know one eleven is too, but the Stepney side is really being built up at a rapid pace, as you well know. I think we need to look at how we manage that. What do we, again, what do we want our town?
What do we, again, what do we want our town to look, what do we want stepney to look, what do we want one eleven to look like? So I think it needs to be managed very slowly, there's no hurry, and very carefully. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
So my name is Dan Shalagowski. I'm twelve Bart Road. I'm the first house right behind the lot. And, you know, we just moved in last March. It's coming up on a year. Uh, that repair shop was something that was still vacant when we were looking at buying the house. So, I mean, in terms of abandonment, nobody's been there. A lot of the stores and the other shopping plaza have been abandoned as well. Like, I've literally been inside the building because I, I got to know the landlord. He was kind of showing me around, but there is a lot of runoff down the street. Part of it was flooding my basement. And when we did a home inspection, the radon level was so insane, it was above seven. Now, now, there's no like federally accepted whatever safe level because radon is not safe to begin with. But they say that four is a manageable level. I had a radon system put in before I bought the house and it is still hovering around six and a half. So the system's not effective now. You said there were floor drains in that business. It's a little bit uphill from my property. So I'm sure that there has been drainage there, which is why I have a well pit, but it's been connected to city water. There used to be a well water there, which is no longer the case. Um, I'm surprised there's not an asphalt curb along the road alongside my property line. And the creek that is part of my property in the back that you guys were concerned about with all the runoff, there is a lot of runoff. You can go any storm, even right now during this past ice storm. I have a three-foot strip of ice right along my property because I didn't want to get too close. Um, next thing is, yeah, you know, we have a lot of auto body repair shops early along the road. There was a mine at Key to Sound Auto Kingdom. They failed. You know, let's say that this one's not going to fail. So what's the point of opening it? Um, it's not aesthetically pleasing. The parking lot right next to me already has, you know, more lighting put in. My whole entire backyard is lit up, just like my neighbors'. The whole thing is lit up. I know in other towns, it's not allowed. Your lights are not supposed to be shining out the adjacent properties or whatever. Other thing is the amount of garbage on that whole thing, all the chom hardware, everybody there. There's so much garbage behind the gun store, it all floats into my property, even the little mini mart that also sells cigars and everything. Everybody just comes out of there and throws their garbage in my front yard. If you don't believe me, I'll be here in a month with a clear trash bag. After all the garbage that I collected, I'll show you. There's a dumpster outside of this abandoned auto body shop that has not been active in the last six months. Garbage from that dumpster flies out, goes into my property. What am I supposed to do with it? This isn't really, you know, I was hoping this to be a place that I could start a family, raise a family. Now the cigar shop that was behind the ice cream store moved right there. They're supposed to be having a ventilation system and everything. It's all venting into my yard. I'm not supposed to be smelling cigar smoke in my kitchen at night. I know this is a little bit off topic, but I'm just saying that another business like this in that corner, what's the guarantee that, you know, garbage isn't going to be floating around? That the drains aren't connected, then, you know, maybe flooding my basement would call in. Who knows? The property is so close. And yeah, there is so much traffic that it's impossible to make a left turn out of the hardware store, out of whatever. Everybody comes down, right down to my property, goes left on Bart Road and waits for that light to make a left turn. Every single day, there's at least a hundred cars, hundred cars, you know? It's just, I don't know. I don't think it's the right location and place. I know it's grandfathered in and everything else, but I know that there's other uses for this building. If not, I think wreck it down makes something else. People make like CrossFit gyms out of it. They do some other thing, you know? And, you know, especially Saturday, nine to six. I don't know. It's a little bit pushing. Usually they're open until at least twelve, but Saturday, I don't know. I'm concerned about noise pollution. I already have cigar smoke. I already have a gun shop in my backyard. Other thing, but, you know, garbage, what the landlord did, he put a dumpster right outside my kitchen window. That's not solving the problem. There's still a ton of garbage there. Don't believe me? I'll take pictures. No problem. I'll bring them in. I'll put them up right up on the wall, whatever, whatever proof you need. You know, I've been living there for the past eleven months. I can tell you it's not, it's becoming not a non-pleasant location to live. So as far as raising a family, I don't know. I don't know if this is the place or whatever, but, you know, it's, it's zoned. Places are zoned for reasons, you know? And I don't know.
Thank you.
Something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Just verify everything you said.
All right, anybody else in the public?
I would just like to say that.
No, we have to do, everything has to come up here. Name for the record, speak into the microphone. Everything's recorded, please.
My name is Mariana Pchek. I live out in twelve Bart as well.
Thank you.
I would just like to say when we bought our property eleven months ago, we checked that it was in a B one district. We checked that because of that, another body shop could not be reopened. We did not hear anything about anything being grandfathered in. And we would not have bought our property if we had known that another body shop would have been opened. It devalues our property and it's just not right. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Anybody online? Kathy?
Hold on one moment.
Hold on, Kathy, we have to unmute you.
Okay, I think you can hear me now?
Yes, loud and clear.
Thank you. Kathy Lindstrom, two ninety-eight Guinea Road. I just want to reiterate a couple of things. This is not a permitted use in a B one zone, period, end of sentence. All the accessories and all the other fancy gizmos and gadgets you're going to try to manipulate around it, it is not a permitted use. The former service station was operated there probably about ten years, maybe even longer. They did not sell used cars. It was an auto repair service operation. That's what they did. They, it was not used cars. So they didn't abandon use. They didn't even add an accessory use. It wasn't, it didn't happen. Monroe Muffler down the street at the corner of Route fifty-nine and twenty-five did sell used cars. They must have had ten or fifteen of them and with the little white flags and, you know, buy mine. And it had the prices on it until we made enough of a stink and we told them they could not sell them. There are no more used cars being sold at Monroe Muffler because it is not a permitted use. They had them parked on the grass. They had them all over the place and they're gone and should be gone. I'm also concerned that, uh, there is not going to be adequate landscaping. Unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to really check out the plans, but there should be, we should be requiring landscaping on the front of the property along Main Street and along Bart Road and whatever screening would be necessary in the back of the property to protect the neighbors and maybe even the wetlands. So th- these are some major issues. The zones have been established for a reason. They should not be changed. And the fact that this gentleman will be a tenant, he's not going to be owning the property, gives him a different perspective on how the property should be used and perceived in the town, for the overall benefit of the town. And so I would urge that the commission not approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online? All right, Mike. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mayne. We'll go on back to the applicant then for any other comments before we move on.
I appreciate everybody's comments. Thanks for a lot of nice, a few things. Uh, all I can say is, uh, I come from thirteen years of experience of this operation. Uh, I'm not mining key that's going to come in and put two, three cars up front and put flags up and whatnot. I'm willing to go, uh, the extra nine yards to do whatever it takes to make sure it's uh, a very well-reserved property that looks good, that gives a good, uh, you know, initiate. As soon as you, as you come into the lot, it's going to look good, even if you're driving by. Uh, I'm not looking to, if I have to fence in the back to make it look presentable for you. Uh, this way, you know, your, your houses are not devalued or whatnot. I'm willing to go and do that as well. You know, at the end of the day, the SCP are available for people like me, um, so we can try to improve things like this. Um, and with the, uh, participation of everybody's voices, of course. So, you know, with the discussion of, of the commissioners, I'd, I'd like to know how we can possibly proceed and cover some of the topics that the residents have discussed tonight. And just for the record, I'm not opening a body shop. I know that some people said that. It's not going to be a body shop. It's going to be a quick repair shop. It's basically in and out. We want oil changes. We want balancing, uh, things like this. We'll not have cars scattered all over the lot, e- either in the front or in the back. Uh, for the record, what you guys saw on, on the records, I don't know if it's public online issue.
It is.
It is, okay. So for our last meeting, the whole, the reason why I drew up these parking spaces uh, because we discussed storage facility and about just to show where it, it, they are to be situated behind the building. Um, for the property that's directly behind this property, if it's an eyesore for you, we could put shrubs, as we've discussed. We could put a fence up, uh, whatever it takes for us to make it look nice and neat. Um, so that's what I have. Thank you. You gotta leave it open.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, if you have other questions.
It has to stay open, correct?
Yes.
It will stay open.
It has to stay open because you'll need the zoning board of appeals determination in order for you to make that determination. However, I will say just based on timeline, we'll have to figure out with the ZBA. Uh, we will most likely be asking you for a request for an extension of the public hearing. The public hearing has to be closed within thirty-five days. Um, however, we can grant an extension for up to sixty-five days for any portion of the application process. So once we get a, a little closer to that time period, we would ask the applicant to put that letter in so that we can continue um, with the process. But yes, we will leave the public hearing open and then if you pursue, can want to continue to pursue the application, we'll coordinate on getting in front of the ZBA.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go on to, um, our next application. That's ZCRA twenty twenty-four dash O one. It's one fifteen and one seventeen Main Street. And STP twenty twenty-four dash O one, also, uh, five fifteen, five seventeen Main Street. This is going to be broken up into two separate applications, but, um, we will be hearing them together. As we will, as they are requesting a special development district number five to be created. Commissioner Condon, you have the, um.
Yes, uh, in accordance with CGS eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held Thursday, January eighteenth. It's something from that will soon thereafter be a hybrid meeting and in-person and. That all. DCA slash RAA twenty twenty-four zero one five one zero two seventeen, five fifteen and five seventeen Main Street. Zoning map amendment and regulation amendment petition application to establish special development district number five within the Main Street sign district overlay located at five fifteen and five seventeen Main Street. On the top is J Edwards and Associates LLC, representative. Uh, notice was published by January third and January tenth.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon, and, um, the exhibits.
I suggest for clarification, as you had mentioned, these are two separate applications. Uh, the zoning regulations has a public hearing associated with it. The site development plan does not have a public hearing associated with it. So as it relates to the public hearing, it's actually only in relationship to the zoning regulations. However, as part of the zoning regulations, they do submit conceptual site plans, um, of which case are in the record and we believe the public can comment on those. Uh, we will still have to keep, discuss this as two separate items. Um, however, the public can comment on the conceptual site plans. They would like to present it, my understanding is kind of as one application at the beginning, especially for the initial. Uh, but we will have to make sure that we are doing this in two, in two separate items. So as it relates for the exhibit, um, for the special development district, uh, we have the zone boundary change position application. We have the statement of uses and standards from the applicant. We've also received their certified mailing receipts. Uh, there is a planning and zoning administrator report. Um, and then they have, based on that report, uh, already submitted an updated statement of uses and standards.
Okay, thank you. And for the applicant, we have.
Attorney David Thomas, Conan Thomas, Maine State District, representing the applicant. Just to clarify, Conan Thomas is not the applicant. When I go to TCT, it's the mentors. Applicants, um, for a self-storage facility at five fifteen, five seventeen, uh, Main Street. And let me give my, give me a little background as to why you know, um, the applicants together. Uh, this process began, uh, last summer, uh, PK, pre-Catherine, I guess, uh, pre-Cathleen, uh, when Rick Schultz was the, uh, founder of that. And, uh, so my clients approached me about with this project and I contacted, uh, Mr. Schultz and met with him. Having a thirty-five, forty-year relationship with him, having done, uh, much zoning. I do a lot of land use and a lot of, it's a challenge during the years from Rick there. Your, uh, special design district is modeled, uh, to a very extent after a planned development district exists in Chell. And, uh, during the course of our discussion, because of the size of the, uh, property, we looked at it. And, uh, and very often with PBDs and have a smaller, uh, uh, the planned development district, get the same system, uh, an initial concept plan and followed by final site development.
Bless you.
Um, and the, uh, that proposal often is done in a single-step process. So I made an inquiry as to whether or not, under this new SDD regulation, it can be done in a single-step process and I was told yes. At that time, and, and still to this case, there is no specific SDD application. So when I finally got involved in it, um, um, at a time when, um, we had a meeting, I think with your subcommittee, I think it's, uh, referred to. We had a meeting, we, we discussed it. I took a look at the applications. I also met with staff that was filling in, uh, uh, at that time in between Mr. Schultz, I guess the next person and, and Kathleen. And, uh, I made the determination since the planned development district has been determined by the courts or a special development district has been determined by the courts to be a zone change on the property. Uh, I used the, um, zone map change, uh, application. And because we wanted to do it in a single-step process, I, during the course of the meetings with staff, it was suggested if you're going to do it in a single-step process, you should also use site plan applications. There's a history of how it came to being that, that this is, in my intention was it was going to be a single-step, uh, process. How, um, we, um, went through a lot of, uh, preliminary discussions concerning site, all the issues, uh, relating to the site. This is a self-storage, uh, proposal, a climate-controlled self-storage proposal. Um, I was going to, uh, upload this, but I didn't get a chance today and I will, just for the record. Uh, Connecticut Insider, the first publication sent a very interesting article entitled, Why Connecticut Is Seeing A Surge In Self-Storage Facilities. It's a growing business. It's a very interesting article. Uh, I have a somewhat lengthy history. I began doing them, uh, technically back in two thousand and five and probably over the last almost twenty years, nineteen years, I've done about seven or eight, uh, throughout the state. Uh, larger ones representing, uh, uh, developers if you use the modest state who have come in to do this. Obviously self-storage, I'm sure you're aware, is a lot different than the orange red door self-storage that was the self-storage in the past. Now it's, uh, as it says in the article, it's climate-controlled self-storage. And, uh, and you already have one other application, uh, uh, that is such a thing. And this thing points out the uses. It's important to bring people in the town. I know you're, you're in department proposal. That's why. It's important to bring people to town. I know you're, you know, in the apartment proposal, that's one thing that contributes to it. But it also contributes to businesses, uh, small businesses that it, that exist. And, uh, other types of, uh, individuals, it's become very popular in self-storage. And of course, they don't look, as you will see from our presentation, anything like, uh, the old-fashioned, uh, uh, garage door self-storage. Um, yeah, it, so in the, uh, statement of uses and standards. Uh, uh, I put, uh, tailored, obviously, the, uh, bulk standards and everything to the site. Uh, in the report, uh, from, uh, from your, uh, brand's administrator, I, uh. One of the things she pointed out to me was the issue of parking. So, uh, before I turn it over, the, uh, the engineer to go over that, the, uh, PowerPoint presentation. The, uh, back in two thousand and five, when I first did, I actually. Utilizing a traffic engineer that, uh, we use a lot, uh, I obtained information, uh, which he gave me, said it was based on the ITE. That, uh, self-storage, the, the business, uh, model, parking was based on, uh, usually a parking. Per the number, uh, per one hundred units. So, I did, uh, upload, I don't know if you, uh, I did email it, I don't, I didn't see it. Then upload the ITE, which is based on the number of, uh, 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 parking spaces per one hundred units. This is a proposal for approximately five hundred units, uh, because it's been proven over the years that, uh, that, uh. These type of, uh, uh, businesses do not generate a lot of parking. There has to be spaces for loading and, and unloading and, and as you see, we have, we have a substantial number of parking spaces beyond it. Because we have the ability to do that, but they also function as, uh, loading spaces. Uh, and, uh, they, that is based on what the ITE, uh, proposal, which they give. Uh, the document that I uploaded basically gives both peak hour and off, uh, peak time and off-peak time. And bases it on the, uh, uh, number, the, uh, one for one hundred units. Uh, the number that I've used in several, many, uh, either PBDs or zone changes that I've done is the one space per hundred. Plus one space for each employee. Modern day, self-storage is a situation where it's monitored, uh, very much electronically, remotely. And most of them have one, sometimes that maximum of two people at, at, uh, at any time. And they are, you know, very secure and, uh, monitored. So, with respect to this site, uh, we believe it is, uh, as you'll see, we believe that this is a, uh, an excellent use for this site. Uh, I do know, uh, that, uh, that there was a letter from a neighbor, uh. Who responded, was concerned at one of the residential, uh, neighbors. I have a, uh. A, a little exhibit, a paper exhibit, which I can have at appropriate time. But, uh, one of the things that, uh, uh, you'll see when this is presented is that due to the change in, uh, topography. And due to the remaining existing buffer, uh, that we think that, uh, this type of use, uh, will not interfere in any way, shape or form. Uh, it is in the B1 zone, but will not interfere with the residential uses behind it. Uh, second of all, when you see these, you'll see that as, as often with this case, if you drove by it. And you didn't redesign, you would wonder what stores were in the little shopping center, very nice looking shop. That's what basically the, uh, the thrust is. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, the engineer Jason Edwards. I, he has a PowerPoint. And, uh, at your, uh, discretion, uh, because sometimes it's easier to refer back, I do have, uh. Eleven by seventeens of the PowerPoint. With your permission, I can pass it out to you for that, and you can follow along.
Perfect.
As PowerPoint's going through, uh, but it's your.
Yeah, pass it on. Pass it over to, uh. Good evening. For the record, Jason Edwards, J. Edwards Associates, uh, engineers, surveyors, two twenty-seventh, Rose Eastland. Um, so, um, this is, uh, stated, uh, located by, uh, eighty-five seventeen Main Street. Openly paid here as a, a regular, uh, book, uh. Big part of the building is proposed to look like, uh, which.
No, we're good.
Is, uh, this is right next to Starbucks today and it's tended to, uh, sort of mimic the, the look of the Starbucks. And we drew, um, this is, um, do you wanna go through any of these? You might wait till later. So, uh, as I said, this is, uh, five fifteen, five seventeen Main Street. Um, located in, uh, this, this south of, uh. Sorry, north of Starbucks, five twenty-five Main Street and to the, uh. Yeah, just, just next to the, uh, the former Roberto's Restaurant. I don't know if there's a new restaurant there yet. That was Roberto's and their Tesco's. Um, and, uh, across the street is a swamp and behind it is some, uh, some residential property behind here. You'll see the, um, this parcel actually consists of the former Taylor Rentals in the year. Behind it is a single-family home that has an actual driveway out here. Those two parcels comprise this, uh, this proposal. Uh, this is just a, uh, a, 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 a zoning map. Let's see that, in, uh, it's probably located in the B1 zone. Over in the rear that, that stretches into the, the one zone on the back. It, but it's also, more importantly, it's in within the MBD overlay though. And that allows us to submit our application for a SDD. Does the, you have a, now, what do you, this is, right, um, looks like this is a. Just a copy of the existing condition survey that's in the plan set. But it's, uh, two point six acres, uh, two, two parcels, uh, that says the Taylor Rental Facility was in front. That's, uh, centrally abandoned. And then the rear is, uh, I think it's got, I believe it's still occupied now, but they, not certain of that. But it obviously won't be once, uh, if, if we're approved and, and see with the destruction. Uh, the zone line that I mentioned does, uh, I said the lot here, the front is B1 and the rear are A1. Uh, the property is significantly have the slope down, uh, in the rear, flattens outside and then get the, the front of the property. Flat and make the road, uh, is currently serviced by public water, except they're getting looking to be. Service pilots. It does, just the color, I think she can fly on the plan set. Put that up here. Uh, this includes some landscape overlay. And you can see where some of the surrounding buildings are. This is an aerial photo from September this year. Um, uh, two new buildings are proposed, uh, they each have a fifteen thousand square foot, roughly fifteen thousand square foot footprint. They are, uh, upper and lower levels, so you would drive in and have, uh, front access at this elevation and then continue up and around. And have access to, uh, the rear of this building and the front of this building. And then you can also drive around to the rear and the other. You'd have four different, uh, accesses. Now, all of these will be, um, interior access, there's no, no garage door access, it's just interior access, I believe that's. The, the applicant can confirm that, but that was managed there. Um, so, uh, the off, there will be an office, small office area in the front left of the building, which is where we place, uh, some of this parking. serviced by one entrance, I said, and it provides circulation to pass through and out for, uh, emergency vehicles. We did, uh, do turning, uh, analysis to play with the underground fire apartments vehicles. And we do satisfy their requirements. The second system, uh, will be out here in the front left side of the building, this little green rectangle here. Um, there's not much, uh, uh, anticipated water usage on this, it's just for the office personnel that may be there. Um, we have a, uh, stormwater retention system that's detailed, uh, meets, uh. Current, or actually, it, it exceeds the current, uh, DPD guidelines. With the new, uh, DPD guidelines that are going, uh, to affect later this year. Provides a greater capacity. Water quality volumes, that's, that's fair treatment of the initial first flood. Stormwater. Um, the water collected through, you know, pipe network here, catch basins coming around to a drainage system in the upper level here. That drainage system, uh, overflow is when, when full and connects out to the lower system that also serves. Eventually, the water is discharged out to the state drainage, probably point five years, back into the pipeline. You've, uh, been, uh, down, down engineer, he knew, uh, the plans, we're still working on final revisions. Uh, I did have a conversation, or my staff had a conversation with him today and, uh. Everything is, we're on the same page on everything, it's working out technically, so. So, if the period left open, we have all that resolved before the next, next meeting. This is, uh, the landscaping society, this is prepared by, uh, Environmental Land Solutions, Matt Hop, landscaping partner. I do not believe he was able to make it on the ICSS. Uh, but we do have extensive plantings proposed, uh, surrounding the, uh, the entire, uh, proposed development. Um, the, the plant list is here, I, I can go through and name plants if anybody wants me to, but I'll leave it to, uh, if you have any other questions. This is, or we can wait for Matt. It's beautiful. Um, we also did provide, uh, uh, lighting plan, uh, that, uh. Lights are dark, so it's quite compliant and it does the, sort of like the standards of, uh, his own. I think that is the, um, uh, the extent of my presentation, right? We have some information here on the buildings themselves, I don't know if, uh, Tom wants to come up and jump in.
He's a Tom. Cristiano is the, uh, principal of the, uh, owner and applicant and also he knew background on his, uh, experience with self-storage.
My name's Tom Cristiano. Um, I'm the owner and operator of mini self-storage for twenty-five years, really only develop them, is what I do. My main base has always been Connecticut and it's on Route twenty-five, I own the town itself. So, I'm excited about this potential operation here. Basically, I was trying to make it look connected to that little area. We are the partner of the Farbo's, uh, facility there. Uh, Kevin Solis, the neighbor to the left, he's got action on this piece, which I'm excited about. Tesco's coming in and that area, trying to copy, um, place, I, I don't know what it's called. But they have a little coffee shop and the other thing, so trying to connect everything, so there's a little atmosphere and some continuity to the area there. It's an illusion when you look at this building in the sense that, um. The front has facade on it. This facade, uh, in proportion is really hiding the building behind it also. So, I'm going off the top of my head, but it's approximately thirty-four feet tall. So, what happens is from the street, you can't see behind, behind, to the second building, um, in essence. But proportionally, it looks great. So, um, excited about it. It's the vibe. I was sort of directed to head in. I think we nailed it, um, in our presentation. He does that, significant cost to the building, but I think that's price paid, you know, put in a good facility, so that's, that's where it is. The demand for storage in the area, I know it's, I, every meeting I come to, somebody else is trying to build another store. So, I am familiar with all that and trying to make it all work, but pretty good for my locations. And actually, there's a couple other apps where they're putting theirs. They all seem to be fitting, uh, at the moment, um, there's been a pent-up demand. This day, I have two or three units available up in Newtown. And so, we'll capture a lot, so I feel great about the business and the model. I don't really have any certain spot of. That's really about it. Well, it's, um, we're trying to capture, uh, sell their house, and they have three units left of furniture. Yes, it's, um, seventy percent of our customers. And so, we're not, um, so they're gonna all bring their furniture in a small U-Haul, most likely. Or in their pickup trucks, um, they're gonna come through like a, it's almost a four-foot wide door and our hallways are five feet. And they're gonna maneuver through the building in that, in those ways. We have basically three access points, um, entries really, that the, that the customers use, um, through the facilities on each floor. And, and we don't really have like loading docks, but the, the cars come or the little, or the, um, the box trucks and they, spot and they. We unload, basically, but it's not a, you know, or they have professional movers who come and they unload for that period of time. So, it's, it's kind of a quiet, quiet process. Uh, it also doesn't require a loading dock or a, uh, things of that nature. It's not what we want. So, at nine, at, you know, nine o'clock, most likely, doors will all be closed. It's like an office building. It'll be, it'll be done for the desk. Um, we won't have a gate like the traditional gate, but we'll have an arm that comes down on both sides. So that, I, we don't want kids pulling up there, uh, you know, getting in the back, having their, or cappuccinos or whatever. Making a mess in the back, so we wanna, so we'll prevent that from happening. And then the front will be right on Main Street, so I think it was, it's. There was some discussion that we have too many parking places, um. It's just that the size of the building is what it is and, um. If we don't have lines where people can park, um, it's chaos, you know, it's like, uh, it's like a free fall, so we. So, we wanted to just add the parking places, not that we necessarily need them. But we might have five people, but they'll be all in different spots. If we don't have the lines, they, they park anywhere and it just becomes, I can't describe it. You just have to see it and it, it just becomes instant chaos. So, um, so if that's an issue, it's something where we have to actually eliminate the pavement, you know, and make it more planted. But, uh, I don't think that, I think it makes sense like it is. If there'll be, uh, if there's any questions.
Let's start, uh, with Kathleen. Do you have, uh, your comments on this application?
So, I'm gonna say my comments for both the text change as well as for the site plans. Um, and, and for the history, I do appreciate it. I do, their intention was to do this one application. I believe it was submitted in the beginning of December where, um, it was PK, uh, pre-Cathleen, but post, so. So, they, uh, uh, so staff just processed it the way that they would have seen it should be processed. And, um, so we're gonna continue with that, but we are gonna hear it as, as, as one application. Um, as it relates to the Chairman O'Reilly, I, I really apologize. I think there is a little bit of a feedback loop. Um, as it relates to the text, uh, to, to the special design district. Um, I just had a couple minor comments related to wording, just to make sure that it was consistent with, um. With the wording, uh, in the rest of the, uh, zoning regulations for some consistency. Uh, most of that was already updated, um, per our, our conversations, um. Uh, as was mentioned, they're defining, uh, parking per unit. Whereas the other self-storage for SDD number six is defining parking for gross floor area. Uh, I, we don't take exception to it in the sense of planning and zoning. It's just to let the commission know that we're being a little inconsistent from one project to another. Um, I don't see an issue with it being different from one to the other. But if the commission would like, uh, parking to be defined in the same way for the same use, um, from one SDA's district to the other. Um, I'm just bringing it up for, uh, for the commission's review. As it relates to the site plans, um, if we wanna go back to, can we go back to something that shows the planting and the grading? Um, as it was mentioned with parking, the only reason the excess of parking was brought up is because there is a portion of the code. Uh, that talks about the goal of the parking is to meet the standard, not to be below or to exceed. If you're exceeding it, you're increasing the impervious surface, um, for this consideration. Uh, obviously, the, the buildings are in two separate locations. You wouldn't wanna provide parking in the. Uh obviously, the the buildings are in two separate locations, you wouldn't wanna provide parking in the front and expect them to be able to access the building in the rear. As I had mentioned, they're providing additional spaces so that you could access the building um in different locations. They're providing handicap parking spaces for both of the buildings. Um also, parallel parking is 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 a portion of the code talks about it not being in parking lots of over twenty. Um however, this is a specific um. This isn't required to have parking of over twenty, I think your parking requirement is for seven, um so they are in excess for the parking uh. But due to the use of this area, especially because it's a little bit of a specialty use. Um I don't take exception to the way that their parking is laid out, uh just bringing it in front of the commission for their view. The way the grading uh is on the site, as was mentioned, is Starbucks sits higher and then the residential in the back sits higher. Um so as you look at their landscaping, planting, the topography is actually in their favor in those areas. Um that they will provide some of this for the property, the back building is ten feet higher than the front building, though, there is quite the grade change. Um and the driveway that they have uh on the adjacent to the side of the building is at a ten percent grade. Um which is acceptable um for fire truck access, we have not received fire comments, but I will follow up with them to see if they have um any comments. On this application prior to the next meeting. Um however, on the left side of the screen where you're going down to the restaurant, uh that grade is sloping down, so one of my comments was just that um. I wanna make sure if you're sitting in that restaurant or if uh any renovations are occurring to that restaurant, which might be happening. Um in the future that they aren't looking to a big barren hill, there is some existing vegetation that is being shown to remain on. Uh on the property in between those two. Uh my only comment was just clarification to make sure that within the grading, they're actually gonna be able to save the trees they're showing to be shaved. Um if they can save them and use that partially as screening, um I think that would be sufficient uh to screen from the from the restaurant um to the adjacent. However, obviously it would be in benefit if you could provide any sort of additional landscaping. Normally, when you're trying to screen a building, you would screen at the top of the hill so that as you're looking up, it's helping block it, but in this scenario. Uh when you're having people on more of a pedestrian scale in the restaurant, I think actually landscaping near the property line would be beneficial. And that and then I have a couple other really small things um for the applicant of uh just small items to fill in, but that can be all done offline, um just accordingly.
Okay, thank you Kathleen, um let's uh go with the commissioner, starting with Commissioner Lupo.
Thank you for the presentation, um. One question, I know um Tommy had mentioned that that's you're not gonna have a seat, you're gonna have the bars that come down, please clarify for me where on there they're supposed to be?
So one, there's an. Show one right here.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, my concern is if they were at the driveway, if someone's, I don't want traffic, a lot of traffic backing up on the twenty five, which we don't need, um trying to get into the facility, okay. Oh, is there any way we can see the building, the second building, are there any markups of what the building in the back would look like? Thinking of the view from Starbucks, what they would see if you're up at Starbucks looking down.
Is that uh it's not.
Yeah. By the way, the West one commented. It's also this uh. The lighting sidewalk.
That's not, so that's the first. I think that's it.
That's the rear building.
That's the rear building.
I think the west side.
Yeah.
At Starbucks side.
West, no, it's not, it's on the south, it's on the south.
They would see the lower part. I think it's the taller part is what you would see from Starbucks. You can tell, no, it's it's down below. That, cause that's about twenty, like twenty two feet or so, I think.
I don't know if I have that.
That's okay, but that's the.
That's just nineteen, I think. That's not the top.
Okay, cause that's the two stores.
Do we have any renderings that show what that view would look like or could we get some?
I can provide that.
Okay.
Now, hopefully, the challenge is this from what angle, cause again, you can't see any of this from the screen.
From Starbucks, you're from Starbucks lot, you're looking down, just kind of what are you gonna see?
They're looking uh.
Down.
You can look at that?
Down.
Yeah, down.
Yeah, no, then I will do that.
Okay.
Now, I can. From what, from the back of the Starbucks, like if I'm in the Starbucks line or?
Yeah, if you're like in the Starbucks line or you're parked over there.
Cause I don't think you'll see it from the front of the Starbucks. I just wanna try to give them the right thing.
Would you, would you also possibly like a section from Starbucks right through the middle? Site to show the different.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
You know, to show how it interacts and then would.
Yeah.
Well, if you're in line at the Starbucks in the back to get in your order.
Yeah.
You see the very corner of the first building.
Okay. And the other building is further back.
Yeah, I'm the record.
Sorry, I, T Cristiano.
Uh can you, I'm sorry, can you go into the mic so that our reporting secretary can?
T Cristiano. Two oh four one B drive, Milford Connecticut.
No, yeah, I, yeah, I could if I can get that cut out, that would be great.
Okay.
And regarding the sidewalks, I do wanna say I appreciate that because that part of twenty five, as many of us know, is very choppy. And with testos now going in, getting cleaned up. You know, provide, you know, gateway from test, I don't know who would walk, but if you wanted to, testos up to Starbucks and kinda come back down again. Um and it's a low impact, low traffic impact for that area too. Um. I don't have any question, oh yes, how close is the Coop's house?
Um. I have, well, we got a lot to. Which starts to, once the letter was discovered, uh and I didn't tell you that. Actually, to tell you the truth, I did when I printed those things out, it actually on my flash drive, I downloaded these and then left the flash break. The office, so just as uh again, this is a two sided eleven by seventeen of the uh. Uh G I S and then on the back of it is the landscape plan with uh notes showing. Where the existing disturbance is now and showing the plant state. Uh in addition to that, what I didn't put on there, and I think uh Jason, the elevation change is probably about uh thirty to forty uh uh feet.
So elevation near the. Twenty six freedom plane. Over fifty feet away from the parking yard in the rear. I do. Farther away than where our uh the current tree line is, it really went the middle. Uh if you also have a grade change, uh not only have a. Drop down elevation, but it actually cut first and then coming back down, so you're at about four fifty at the house, it comes up to four fifty six near the top of the bank. And then it come back down to four thirty four and that's still.
Great, thank you, no other questions.
Oh, my ideas here are a bit repetitive, if we go to the other. How many times the uh the use, uh this type of use has come in front of us and we obviously are concerned with oversaturating the market. You know, with too much self storage, um you guys have done your market analysis and that's um something I guess we're gonna, upon approval, we have to trust. Um. The fact that it's overparked, as far as I'm concerned, isn't an issue, I mean, it looks proportionate to the building, the way it was designed, I think if you had less parking, it wouldn't look proper and. People probably would be parked in the wrong areas and. Um so that, yeah. So I'm not worried about that, now, at one time, I think it may even been at subcommittee, there was some discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, about some. You know, trying to make it a little bit more upscale with some like. Chilled wine storage, that type of a feature in there, was that still in play?
No, it's not. It's the upscale is the climate control. Um and then and just the the finishes inside, I don't think really, that's that's what we always offer. And the fact that we have an employee there, a lot of these new structures don't, they're employed less.
Yeah.
It's all automated, but we will have the service of somebody there. And it's just that our finishes are nicer and it's all. That's the main thing. The wine storage was my partner's thought process, the bed is a. Um that is a very neat uh thing, it's like car storage, it's it's a special group of people, but it doesn't fit into the the mass here.
Okay.
Be a mistake.
So it's manned with one employee?
It's it's an employee and a half, which is not a statement, but that's the, that's basically what it is, we um. And then we'll have the owner there, our, my off, I'm gonna move my office there, uh so we'll have probably about four people there operating.
And eight to, you said eight to like nine o'clock at night?
Uh we're gonna get people access probably from uh seven in the morning to about eight at night, I try to do it. I don't like to leave it open after that, to be honest with you.
And they won't have a way to get in like a?
No, it gets locked up, cause in the old days it was impossible, like in Newtown, it's very hard for us to keep people out uh, cause they they have push codes and it's. The new technology and it is a um an office building, really is what we're building, it's it's just much easier, it's just like an office building. So the locks will, it'll all be timed out and so they won't get in. There'll be certain people who will have certain different arrangements at times, you know, cause they have a. Um you know, a special need or something and we'll be able to automate that, keep control over who goes in and out and stuff. But ninety nine percent of the time, you know, we'll have set hours and it'll be about nine o'clock.
And how do you handle and what is your offerings as far as refuse? How much garbage will be able to be collected on the site?
What we've learned um is we offer no help for that, um anytime if we have a dumpster. Um they'll fill up the outside of the dumpster uh area, so we have learned that um we have cameras. And we monitor everybody who does whatever and we don't offer that service, so we tell them. The reality is this, when your truck leaves, um and the U-Haul guy leaves, whoever it is, take all your garbage with you. The beginning, we tried, we had garbage bins inside, we had stuff, moving our own garbage unit is, so we'll have our own storage unit. With a with our own garbage inside, you know, and on that day. When the, when they come to do the garbage, we uh put up our door and we put it out and they pick it up and uh, cause we don't generate much. We offered the service in the beginning, but it was a dis, it was like the parking, it was a disaster, it doesn't work.
Yeah, I mean, what what type of, what would happen if somebody did leave garbage?
Oh no, we get, we get rid of it that day, so we take it, we put it into, again, we have a couple of units, we'll take it, we'll put it in that unit. Um I I'm. I'm in construction as well, so I'll probably throw it in the back of my truck, throw it in one of the dumpsters we have, if not, the garbage uh garbage company that we assign comes down to pick it up, it just depends.
There's so many of these places now driving by them, I don't typically see a problem, a lot of garbage around, but it is a consideration, especially with a restaurant next door either side. Um you know, and as far as the oversaturation comment, you know, but the fact that it's climate controlled and the the way the construction's going together. It can almost be repurposed, you know, is what I'm thinking, if this were to not work.
Um I just wanna be honest at all times here, the way the building is constructed, it's hard to repurpose it because of the structural elements. Um it's a lot of small rooms, the structural grid is tinier, so you would be stuck into a twenty by twenty box. Not saying it couldn't be repurposed, um but it's not a, it's not a great thing, nobody's gonna come running if I don't make it. Say I want that turning into an office building, which is would be very struggle.
You'd better make it.
I'm gonna make it, it's not a problem.
I will, I think it's informative and I wish I had done it today, but I will upload the article that I referred to and I think it's important, I mean, I. Did in the last twelve months uh and. One thousand units. Uh seven hundred and seventy unit uh on Bridgeport Avenue where the old image graphics building uh is, they're uh repurposing the. The building adding floors and they're doing seven hundred and seventy and then way down the road by, as you get close to the old, you know. Marketplace, Walmart just passed Walmart, they got approved for. In the thirties. Units, one of them minor regional, the other one super. Their marketing, you know, you have to trust their marketing like you said.
I I feel good about it because um I don't wanna share all the information, I have competitors. They're on my butt, because I have the Newtown place, I have the demographics of where all these people are coming from, why? You got a handle on it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, you've certainly done a good job uh as far as the construction and aesthetics, you know, and. You know, I know a lot's been discussed tonight about the um the concerns with the the river and the runoff and, you know, the different. Issues that could pertain to being around that, I feel like redevelopment of some of these. Older sites, you know, bring systems uh like stormwater management, screening, lighting, and that type of thing up to current standards, which is helpful, so. That's all I have.
Uh bathrooms?
There's. There's um two bathrooms.
In each?
Not, no, just in, just where the office is, there's a bedroom and a women's room in the office area.
Nothing, nothing in the.
Nothing out in the, so you have to come into the office and you use the facility.
Nothing in the other building?
No, nothing anywhere else.
Um so how far off the road are you?
Those are, hold on a second, I can remember. Um, one second.
Here's the Starbucks, it's a little bit behind the Starbucks.
We are. It'll be seventy one point three feet off. From the street line, so you'll be from the actual pavement, you're about eighty feet.
Because if we look at and if we wanna stay fair and consistent. Throughout the process, all the other ones are about three hundred feet off the road.
I'm just saying, if you wanna talk about fair and consistency, that's all the rest of the line.
The reason you have development districts is not for consistency. Consistency is your cutting zone. Cutting zone is where you have a zone that you lay on a large parcel of property and you want the same bulk standards to to do. The reason the plan development district concept came about was so that. Specification of bulk standards could be used in the top. And a good example that I can give you is actually somewhat. Uh. Shown here in that I put, because of this site. I was able to put, I put seventy five foot uh setback from the uh. Uh for the resident zone, the reason I did that, I wasn't doing it just by plucking the number out, I was doing it cause I was looking at the plan. Saying, okay, I could actually go shorter than that, why? Because I have existing buffer and I have topography. But but yeah, I looked at the site, I looked at our developments, I know seventy five feet is appropriate. And then uh Kathleen mentioned to me about uh about roads and parking, so I I amended the significant uses and standards to say. That there would be no parking in that seventy five feet, which there couldn't be because of the topography, but there could be a turnaround, cause the turnaround sticks in it. So when you're talking about bulk standards and a a develop, I, what's it called, a plan development district, a design district. You're not looking for consistency within those districts, what you're looking for is how now those bulk standards impact. The property on which you're putting the new zone. Because the the. The the. The several, I mean, the bring word, uh it was in my case, one of the two cases that were argued on development districts. When you do this, that is a new zone, it's not an overlay or anything like that, during your development, that comes to the zone. So you're not looking for consistency amongst development districts, you should be looking for how it impacts that property. So that's the reason the setbacks, which, and I chose the setbacks based on the plan, and you try to tailor the bulk standards to the plan. As best as possible, and you also have a tendency, what we do, have a tendency to look at what your bulk standards are for the district. So I think your bulk standard. If it's a bulk standard for V one, set that is.
I have a chart I can send you.
Yeah, it was uh the V one district, the one yard is fifty, but because of the way we were designing it, we were able to put it seventy, we're actually seventy one fifty. And that was the purpose of it.
Okay.
If I could just add on that too, I'm not sure if you're referring just to the S D D zones for self storage, but I know we did Steve, you are. Stephen's lumber was closer to that. And also the.
On the building, you know.
I like the way it looks. I think it's I think it's well done. I think it's actually very, very smart. Um I'm assuming, but I'm just gonna ask anyway. God forbid a fire EMS, all that kind of stuff, easily accessible anywhere on the property.
Yep.
There is a fire uh news. Emergency.
Yeah, we have a plan.
Emergency plan is in there.
Just making sure.
Yes.
Um. Um stop. When I was looking at this, you you have a lot of, it doesn't seem like there's anything really bigger than ten by fifteen. Am I correct?
No, there you go to ten uh ten by twenty-five.
Okay, so okay, I must have missed it, but.
No, that's okay. There's.
Because most most so they're not really that big. So you're not. So you said you there are possibilities of moving trucks and stuff like that.
No, I'm um. Like, no, uh if you're storing a house. Probably need. Two ten by point five units. Final. Up above all. Units. So that makes it a bit more unique. Essence. So they have a big unit of units. And when I first started, the smaller units were more demanding, ten by ten, five by ten. In the same area will be a doubt and and now it's the larger, the things in climbing. Again, they're very hard to find. They just don't.
And these moving trucks of something that can move a whole house that needs two ten by twenties can fit around all these places?
Well, we don't allow because of because they destroyed my property, but um we don't allow the low body moving trucks to come in. We always tell them that. It's our own uh they may fit, but we don't. We don't like. Yeah, so um we we specifically tell them what's allowed, what's not allowed. It's a. Uh the box that I give them have a lower uh but uh they get in and out. They know what they're.
Thank you.
So you you said that um. You have a certain many hours of operation, right?
Yes.
So you wouldn't have an issue with us putting in thing hours?
Um I don't know if you've done that with other companies, but I don't mind, you know, because we're not gonna be open at certain times.
Right. Well, I'm saying, I know how you are. I'm saying, what if you sold this?
Oh, yeah, no, I I agree with you a hundred percent. Right. So it's a.
And then you have a certain requirement of what you can store in these facilities?
Yes, there there's a list of can't store anything that's hazardous. And then there's other, you know, hazardous can mean anything from. Gas, uh people try to accidentally put their gas grill in there. They have, you know, oils, other things of that nature. So anything like that is.
You have a list of that?
Contract that says.
Have a list of that that you would put in with the application stored there?
Yeah, we could get one. I don't know what the I I'm not the lawyer or the thing, so I don't know what the legal terms are for all those things. We just list on our thing. Don't put that. And that's part of the reason we're there. I don't know how these guys have the storage places. They have no employees because you can't see what somebody's putting in their unit.
No, I'm saying that's what I'm saying. So there's no way of you inspecting it or whatever, but you have.
Just when they're moving in and out and just by sneaking, you know, and you keep an eye on what's going on, but there's, you know, otherwise it's hard.
With respect to the hours issue, it also has to be pointed out. I mean, I obviously film. Uh. Many of these have twenty-four hour access. This one uh wasn't, but there will, as was mentioned by before. There will be certain, the possibility exists, you could have a uh a uh. Client, a customer who needs access at three in the morning because he's picking up uh some sales material, uh you know.
Occasionally have people working night shifts.
Yeah, who would get in at that time. And and as I just wanted to make sure you heard what he said before, that those people might, you know, they might be able to. Except for where they would be able to access it at odd hours for their own purpose. So while it's gonna have the normal business hours, there will be that exception, which does. The ones that have no employees, they're usually twenty-four seven. You know, because you have the code and every time you scan, they know where you're coming in and going out. They're a little different, but they will make an exception. For someone.
We do it every once in a while. We have different clients that.
But he said he was gonna have this thing gated anyway, or.
Yeah, it'd be a.
So those people would have to have a code to get in.
Yeah, they'd have to have a special code.
They're not gonna give a code to everybody. They're not gonna have access to twenty-four hours. I'm saying, so that's like. Him coming in like on one thing to maintain something or pick something up, that would be a special circumstance, right? Open twenty-four hours to the whole public.
No, no, never.
Right. So that's why I'm saying about, you know, certain times of when it's really open to the public.
Yep.
And then um so you have a list of stuff that you store in there, right?
I don't have a specific list, but they'll provide us with one. I I we just say anything that's hazardous and we use common sense on what that is. Things that explode or. Sometimes.
Well, no, I know because a lot of things nowadays now that's.
Abnormal.
With, you know. Electric bikes and stuff like that. It's been a lot of.
It knows it's a battery thing.
Batteries that I have an issue with.
Yeah, I know. It's a very, it's a it's a real issue.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Uh the back building that's gonna be a flat roof, uh do we know what color the plan is for the roof? Perhaps. I mean, is it gonna be reflective or anything like that? Silver or, you know?
We we would try to have it to be white um because of its rough reflective on the like.
Because I'm not concerned would be just with all the higher elevations. Are they gonna be getting glares off the off the roof and stuff?
I don't know. There there is a pretty substantial buffer behind it, but uh. You know, for the the only ones that would really be looking down honestly would be residents way in the back. There's. If you look at the G I S, there's a it's a pretty healthy uh forested area.
Even there, there'll be a for a reason. So I don't know. I don't know. It's a good question that I never I didn't think of it, to be honest. Anyway, it's not. You don't really reflect that, but they do reflect, but um yeah, I don't know. No, no, this is the back way, so it's just gonna slope back. It's just gonna slope down.
Eric, thanks.
Um going back to the hazard material that you might want to screen coming in.
Yes.
Um the operation that you have now, do you have a declaration sheet that that they list items that they're bringing in?
No, nobody. They don't list what they're bringing in or anything of that. They just sign a contract with us that says that they will not bring in hazardous materials. Or guns. Those are the two things we don't like to worry enough to store. And that's. We can't, you know, we can't see everything that people do, so. It's hard to know, but because we actually have employees on site, we do have the cameras, we do try when they're moving in. It's a. Moving in day is the only big day where everybody is there. So they'll come, they get nervous, they want to make sure they get into the unit, that they have the right key, that, you know, everything's gonna work out well. And so um that's the day for us to peek and just take an eye and see what's going on, but there is no guarantee a hundred percent. That's just the way it is. I wish I could tell you. I know every every time.
Do you consider a declaration sheet where they would list items that might be a concern they would blow up or anything like that?
You mean us give them the list?
No, have a a sheet where they would list items that would be of concern.
Okay, I like that. But we don't want them to break up into barcodes.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not understanding. My son has a better.
You're looking for a list of items that the potential tenant would come in and say these are items stored within the unit?
Yeah.
That might be more dangerous for them. Like uh if if like that information got leaked, so we probably wouldn't want to have a.
We have no control over what they put in a unit in a sense of.
How would you prevent?
We wouldn't have any clients.
To prevent batteries from being stored in there.
Pardon?
How would you prevent batteries from being stored in there?
We tell them not to put them in because it's gonna ruin all their stuff because they could potentially get uh catch fire. Same as if you go on an airplane now, you're not supposed to, you know, put that battery uh in your bag. Unfortunately, a lot of this is you have to trust that people will do the right thing. You inform them. We educate them on what to put into the unit and what not to put into the unit. But I can't, you know, they're if they're gonna do it, they're just gonna lie. So I mean, it's, you know, that's the I don't know what to say.
The other issue is these the security systems these days, you know, your security system are not just cameras. They are recorded. So they can be reviewed and if the people are under the impression that they're being viewed on camera. Uh uh sometimes that impacts their sometimes all the time impacts their conduct because you see somebody dragging in something. As far as batteries go, I mean, you're not gonna know when somebody's putting in a uh. Laptop for storage that has a bad battery. You know what I mean? I mean, that's just the risk of it, but the risk is mainly to their own. Uh their own material, their own uh goods.
I only again um. An accident that I got in this business, but it's been twenty-five years. And so the only two fires I've had on site. Have been during construction, kids came and lit the insulation on fire and um caused the big problem in one place because we were storing all the insulation in the units that were gone. And the other was my my furnace went on fire in um up in um on route, you know, up the road on Route twenty-five. Caught fire one day and then on fire. The way the buildings are built, they're in sections and they're small. They're they're areas and it gets contained. Um the stuff in the units is very flammable. Everything else isn't, uh in essence. So haven't had a problem. Um and I'm not gonna say. And I've owned about seven of these so far for a long period of time. So you would think that I'd have more of those problems. I just don't. I don't know why. I'm just saying, I just don't know why.
Thank you. Two elevators, one elevator?
No elevators.
So elevators.
One floor. They're all one one floor.
Okay.
So the volunteer firemen don't have to carry anybody if anybody has a problem and they get to them.
They're actually two floors, but that's.
Yeah.
Front back. They're built into the hill.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Uh I mean, most of my questions are already answered. Um just to clarify, so basically this is going where Taylor rental is and that would be torn down. And then there's a house right behind there and that would be torn down as well.
Oh.
Okay.
I'd like to say just one thing. I do appreciate it for voluntary return. Participate in this process. I know.
Say that to the microphone.
I know someone. I know someone told me it wouldn't take much time and it wouldn't bust anybody. And I know the opposite out of personal experience, so I do appreciate that. And then um the only other thing I want to address is. Um I am very sensitive to the light on our property going to other people's backyards and things of that nature.
Yeah, but today's lights are dark sky compliant.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just gonna say, but I'm personally, it annoys me. I live on White Plains Road in trouble. Uh my own fire department blares a light right into my bedroom, you know.
Fire department.
Down there and I.
Sky compliance.
Yeah, I was about to say. So I get it and I I definitely uh and I'll be receptive to make sure everything stays in code and. I'll keep my neighbors happy.
Awesome. Mike, back to you.
Um I'd just like to make one comment.
Sure. Hold on. One more comment.
I I've been doing this for forty some odd years and you said I want to say this reverse time. But I have been been before a commission when there are two dominics and I'm a dominic and we all spell a name differently. And just same observation.
I gotta say one thing.
There we go.
In the Italian tradition, they say when you get three dominics, you call Chris in the donkey.
It's every day.
Mike, we're christling donkeys next week. Let's go.
All right. All the commission is through, then let's go to the public.
I I'm gonna ask for one thing, which is that I did not read the exhibits. Site development plan, but since we are talking about it, I do want to make sure that they get read into the record. Um which is the application and plan set, which we've seen the majority of. It included a stormwater report. Um there wasn't a butter letter uh which is in the record, but I believe that they are here tonight, so I am gonna let them speak during the public hearing. Um unless they would like me to read it in, which I'm happy to do. We did receive uh conservation comments um for the project. Um their concern is about the the species. They would like it to be native plants and no um cultivars. Because of the cultivars inability um to provide the same support for wildlife um in native plants. Uh they are also requesting a wider variety of plants in smaller numbers. Um and they had very specific questions about a certain species and about reducing them. Um because they are looking to lessen the risk of insect or disease harming uh the landscaping on site. We also have uh engineering comments, um which they are working um with the applicant engineer. And uh my planning and zoning report, which we discussed the comments on uh earlier in the evening.
Thank you. Now we'll um go to the public hearing portion and uh Commissioner Mayne, you wanna take over that?
Sure.
Come on. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you.
Hello, Mary Orsilla, one thirty-six Stanley Road. I guess I have just a couple of questions. One and concerns. One is blasting. I. Don't know. Nobody really talked about that, if that needs to happen and. I know that and I don't know the topography, you know, I haven't walked back there. Um. But I'm very concerned about blasting. I mean, look at Panhu. It's a mess and it's a real big concern and I feel bad for the neighbors. And just the whole area, air quality, et cetera, and safety. So that would be. A big concern of mine would just be the what is there going to be blasting? I don't know. I didn't hear really well if if that was gonna happen tonight um on the basis on what the applicant said. The other thing is honestly, I don't know how many self-storage units we already have in Monroe, but I think we have more than one set. So I think we need to look at. How many do we want? How many nail salons? How many places to eat? You know, my drill, okay? And um but I will say something very positive about. The little shopping center in the front. I think aesthetically it's very pleasing. And it does fit in with our um colonial kind of look and feel. Which is not always done on all the new buildings in Monroe. Um and I have to say it's. Very pretty and very colonial and fits in with Monroe.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Sarah Harris from twenty-six Freeman Lane. So I prepared a statement, but without having all the context and perspective that I've gotten this evening, um. My thoughts are changing, so please bear with me if I'm a little bit slower or ramble a little bit. Um and I don't want to repeat a lot of what was already said with the prior uh agenda item because I know you hear that every month. Which is what's going on with our town and is it overdeveloped and the. We have heard um comments about noise and trash and the quality of the businesses that are coming in and. I don't want to take the time to to have that discussion with you that you already have and I think you all know that. As elected members of this board, that that's the line that you're towing is. Um what is what is good business? What is the business that we need to have here? What looks beautiful? What cleans up those spots that we all drive by and say? What is that and what are they doing inside and how can we make that better versus keeping this the um rural town that it is? And I would just say um I've been here for almost eight years. I moved from Manhattan. After taking a short time uh living on Long Island and realized it was just too suburban for me and I wanted somewhere where there was a quality of life and I chose Monroe. And I chose my home at twenty-six Freeman Lane because it's it's quiet and it's peaceful and I seek wildlife and. Unfortunately, over the last, particularly the last four years, all I've seen is. Less and less wildlife as we're seeing more and more come up, which is great. I'm all in favor for. Um development in this town and I know that you, again, you you hear from residents and concerns of taxes and. Again, you have to balance that. So I respect that and and I hope that you all. Just use your vision in this. Um and so there's a few things that were said today that I sort of want to comment on from my perspective. Uh and I know you've received my letter um because it's. That my first and uh foremost concern is that we're taking away a home here and um. So what I see from my backyard is a home and now I'm gonna be looking at a big box in a parking lot. Um there's also another home there, five eleven. I think there was a statement there that we're not sure if if it's occupied or not, but it won't be, but that's not on these plans, so. To me, I'm I'm confused quite a bit about what this is. What this really entails and how big it's going to be and what uh change it's going to entail and. I'm just concerned that we have business people coming here with a profitable business plans telling you, this is great. This is gonna work. This is what our town needs. But from my perspective, and I certainly wanted to invite you all to come see from my home, but I didn't know if that was appropriate or not, so I'm saying it today. From my perspective. Again, I'm seeing clear clear cutting, probably blasting, lighting, noise, um. Traffic, trash, all sorts of things that I don't see now. lighting, noise, traffic, trash, all sorts of things that I don't see now. I did talk to, I did try to reach out to my neighbors. I will say 35 Cary Hill. When I went up there yesterday, there were no tracks on the entire property. So my guess, they might not even have gotten the notification. I don't know if they lived there all year. And my other neighbor who I know is also a budding, a single mother. She's not here today. So just wanted you to know that. So some of the comments that I took, took notice of, the business model, a storage facility, sure, that's great. Great investment, great franchise, does very well. And sure, it goes along with the, with the dialogue that we need more affordable housing, we need more apartments, we need more senior housing. That's great. But do those same individuals who live in those apartments need those storage units? We're hearing about their market of people who downsize and just need enough space for a couple of rooms in their home. But the reality is, from my understanding, storage facilities are very attractive for those who don't have somewhere to put their stuff and they're moving. And maybe they don't know what their next move is. And they get into a cycle where they're paying a monthly fee to keep their stuff stored. And until they can get into a new home that has a space for that stuff, it's stuck there. So either they're paying a monthly storage fee or they're finding out how they can get into the home that they really want to raise themselves up to purchase. So to me, it's, it's not a, it's not a desirable business, I think. I don't think it fits, I don't think it fits our community. There's a need, sure. Is there a need in that spot? I think that if there's the stuff discussed, 2.6 acres, but Taylor Rental, I mean, is a small building. Certainly needs to be replaced, refurbished, torn down, rebuilt, something beautiful, a quarter of that size. But why do we need to build in a space where there's two homes, a plentiful wooded area, another box? That if this model, business model does change, it's not going to go back to being a house. It's always going to be another industrial building in a space that's not industrial now. If I drive a little bit further up Main Street, or actually if I go both ways, there's plenty of spots where I say, this needs to change. And yes, Taylor Rental does, but this whole swath of 2.6 acres is fine. It's not one of the neighborhoods where you drive and you say, oh my goodness, these homes, these people, you know, they're, they're obviously having a hard time. There's stuff outside, you can't maintain their property. Most, some of the homes are like that, but not all of them. And the budding homes are not. So I just don't understand why we would take down two good homes. I'm assuming 511 is coming down and impact three good homes for this facility. I just don't see the utility in it. And just a few other comments. I know time is valuable. Just making sure I covered everything. Again, I'll repeat my neighbor's comments about the blasting and the clearing. Oh, enforcement. So a lot of what we're hearing today is a discussion about how does this business model work? Not really about a planning and zoning issue. And, you know, to hear as much as we want from these individuals that we're going to close at nine and there will be an occasional person at 3:00 AM, we'll, we'll let them in. And there will be no loading dock, no gate. Our trash, when I see it, I'm going to pick it up. Things that I just know when the reality of the day to day sets in, I'm not sure I buy that. So I'd like to know how, you know, what's being said here today ever can even be enforced. So we're all just going on their, their statement, which has a lot of financial gain behind it. And we're just hoping that everything is truthful. And I'll just say myself, as a resident, I'm only trying to protect my home value for sure. I have a vision for my property. It certainly wasn't this. But I'm not, I'm not going to say something to you that's not truthful because I'm, I'm gaining massive amounts of funding for this. So I just, I just urge you to consider what we've heard here today and whether or not it's, it's really viable. And so the front building, yes, looks beautiful from the street, but that design didn't get carried forward into the rear building. It's, it's just going to be a box. It's, it's going to be that orange box that was mentioned as far as I'm concerned. And that's, that's what I'm going to be looking at. And so I'm pretty sure parts of, I don't know what the plans are for Testo's, but sure, as you're driving through Starbucks, I heard your comments. I think you all kind of understand like what are, what are, what are we really going to see? What's really going to be sheltered? But I might just be one homeowner, but I'll just say that when I purchased my property, it wasn't with that view. It was because I've got in my neighborhood, town open space. A lot of the area surrounding my neighborhood is aquarium property. We see natural flow of, of the water and it's protected. And it's something that we always read back. I know all of my neighbors who are, you know, too busy and preoccupied to make it here today would feel the same about. I just don't see how this sort of massive change, when you move into a house and you see houses and you see open space, you say to your realtor, well, what's going to happen to that? Who owns that? And they say, well, that's a residence. That's aquarium. But you don't think, oh, the residence, this is actually going to be torn down and put into a building. All right, I'm wrapping up. So yeah, again, I would just, I would just say that please do consider what you're seeing and from, if you haven't already driven into the area to see the massive drop off, if there is blasting that is now going to appear and how this one small commercial building is now basically being blown up into an entire commercial space that it wasn't before. And does Monroe really need that? And so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Come on up, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Joel Anikar. I reside at 70 Hunting Town Road, the town of Monroe. I know that the planner put up a series of quick light, I think it was a light plot plan. A couple of questions. Are the, the lighting for this site? I didn't see any pole lights or box lights. I didn't see any details of any sconce type light work. What color is the light going to be? Is it going to be warm light? Is it going to be pool light? Lights going to be on 24/7 or will they go off once the nine o'clock drop off or proposed closure is going to happen? Light trespass is critical. I'm not so sure we have regs that, we, we talk about night sky compliance.
Dark sky.
Or dark sky, excuse me, dark sky compliance. We do not have a light pollution ordinance, as I understand, which was proposed a number of years ago and was not taken on. So how are we going to be assured that the light trespass is not going to happen? Because we can go down the street at the intersection of Route 25 and 59 and you can see that shopping center, not the riding shopping center, but the center across from that, that those lights were put up with no permit and they blow light everywhere in addition to light to people's eyes driving up Route 25. Okay? Now, how are we, are we going to be assured that that's not going to happen? The other suggestion I might make is that we have four seasons. We have trees, maybe five months, trees would leave for about five months. The front landscaping is lovely, quite frankly. I mean, lots of trees up front, orange trees that look beautiful. Probably will connect greatly with Cumberland Farms farther down. But we have no evergreen. Maybe there's some box. I didn't have a chance to read all the plantings as far as I go, but we desperately need green there so it looks healthy all year. Plus, if a lot of people aren't coming, it serves, it can, it can accentuate the architecture, as being proposed. And it can also provide some type of sound buffer, things like that on that road. Lastly, the front of the complex has a proposed faux windows. And we can see that on Route 25, on Route I-95, there are many vertical storage facilities. And they choose to make those buildings look like someone lives there or belongs there by some illumination, right? I realize a lot of that illumination is used for walkways to get to those access. I've got, perhaps a suggestion to the applicant would be is that maybe some of those windows do have a little light for two reasons. One, from a security point of view, so that maybe if someone is in there, you can actually see them. And also it might avoid, just might set a good standard for a lighting aesthetic. So I'm really concerned about the lighting. If I was a neighbor behind, I would be really concerned about what am I going to see as far as the roof lines coming down from Starbucks? I think it's a really valuable, valuable comment. As far as the need, I have no comments on that. I don't, I have no expertise in that area. So I have no concerns whether we need it or not. I do think the applicant has tried to contextually integrate his building with the buildings along that section of town. So that is to our benefit.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
I have a little problem check, 59 Dingly Dell Road, Monroe.
Thank you.
Okay. A couple of thoughts about the traffic flow. Because going, going north, you're going to have to cross traffic. And it's always a bottleneck going north. I don't know how wide the road is on that side, whether cars would be able to bypass. I know those areas are very small and very limited in size. This could be a problem, especially with a little bit bigger vehicles going in and out. I'm also concerned with, what is it, two and a half acres about that?
Yes.
And it just doesn't look adequate and ample for fire trucks or ambulance vehicles.
I asked that question.
Yeah. I'm almost older, so I'm concerned about that.
You're not old.
And I don't remember if they said how many units in this facility.
We can ask.
Okay.
They're, they're in here, but.
I just wanted to know how many units are in the facility? And it says it's a two-story facility. How are people getting up to the second floor? That's a concern of mine because they go up and down and they have to bring stuff up and stuff down. That's just another insurance concern. I don't see. The other thing is signage for this facility. I didn't hear or see anything about signage. And I'm just concerned because I'm Dingly Dell and I'm Dingly Dell, there's a sign, but I can't see more. And I don't want to see anything like that happen. Those are my concerns, questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you for listening.
Anyone else, there's nobody left out here. Anybody online? Mike, back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go back to the applicant now to sum up before we move on.
I'll try to respond to the questions as quickly as possible. I think it's 500 plus minus units, starting with the end and going back. I got to think. The, with respect to the lighting plan, there is a lighting plan that's, one other thing with the last comment, obviously, and I, self-storage is probably one of the lowest traffic generators, you know, uses that there can be. They're very low traffic generators. We can, we didn't do a traffic report because it is such a low traffic generation. I can get you some information on that if you, if you would like. Respect the lighting plan. We can file a lighting plan that is developed by Matt Pop, the continuation of the public hearing. And the lighting, I think, has the various, if you look at it carefully, what is the candle?
Foot candle.
Foot candles as it gets closer to the darkness and everything. There are regulations. With respect to blasting, it's possible. This proposal does need, is built to the grades, but there is some site work that has to take place, whether it's blasting or whether it's mechanical rock removal, either one. But blasting, of course, is controlled by your fire control. There are state, severe state regulations and they would all be adhered to if it's a fire, once they have been tested. But this relates, I think, to the comment, one of the last comments about how do people get to the second floor? Everybody that enters the building where you are, you're entering on your floor and your storage unit is there. So when you enter the front building and you enter from the front, you're going into that floor. There's no, you don't go to, if you want to, if you're on the second floor, you drive around to the back of that building and you enter one of the two or three entrances in the back, right off the floor. So every entrance is at grade level, the way it's set up. So you have two stories in each one. But if you're in the front, you're entering the bottom floor. If you're in the back, you're entering the top floor. So there was no need for an elevator, no need for anything like that. That is the, the concept of building it to the grade, building to the topography. The issue of what goes, and I know this is a design district, but if you go right back to B1, the district that it's in, and the comment about why not leave what's there there. A commission in the past made a determination that this should be the one district. I'm not, just from driving up and down Route 25, Main Street, I'm pretty sure that a small shopping center, since there are several of them, a small shopping center with some offices would be a, I don't know if it's a site plan use or a special exception use, but even a special exception use is a permitted use within a zone. It just enhances your discretion somewhat in that you can analyze traffic. Well, it'd be hard to say a shopping center wouldn't go there because you have already, within the zone, have several other shopping centers. You can have a small shopping center there in which the developer, and with shopping centers, it has to be made with that. Can't build it to the topography. So this commission, not you personally, the commission in the past made a determination that the use along Main Street was a business use in which that property, which happens to have a house on it and a small other commercial building, could be a shopping center. So the impact of what we're proposing in the design district is technically actually less than what could be done under the permitted uses, even under special exception. So it is difficult sometimes. And I, I don't want to blame, I have some of my best friends are Realtors. But when a Realtor is asked, well, you know, is that going to stay the way it is? Well, Realtors aren't land use attorneys nor are they planners to say, oh yeah, sure. No, check the zone. What is the zone and what's going to be there? And in many of the older communities, you have blended industrial and rental businesses that you have to deal with. Here in Monroe, we made a decision that you're going to have the B1 district. They laid it against residential because that was the only way to do. That was where you put your business. So what we're trying to do with our design district, actually, I'm sure the sheriff doesn't appreciate it, but what we're trying to do is do a design that would create something that would blend with the topography somewhat to prevent as much, and to leave as much natural buffer in the back of this. Granted, she will be looking at something different. But she can look at it, it's not anything against the nature of the system. So I hope I think I tried to answer most of the questions that were asked. Thank you. And of course, this will continue so we can continue to respond.
You're going to leave it open?
Yes, yes, we have to, we don't, we have to have Matt Pop address. And I think we have to address all the engineering plans and those things. So we have to leave it open.
Sweet.
Sweet. Okay, thank you very much.
Can I ask this question in, if it continues to waste? Really don't seem to pull me by zoom, it's, uh, because something on vacation. Do you have no problems going forward without me in two weeks or, uh? Would you rather?
I, I can, I think we're okay.
Yeah, I think we're okay, that's fine. I just have to reveal it to them and I won't need no trouble.
You're going to let him go on vacation?
Oh, you, you, so yes, you want this on the agenda for two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, we will continue this, um, until the first hearing in February. Um, we're going to move on to deliberations and determinations. We have, um, one application.
I think so.
The, um, 205 Monroe Turnpike, the application for a special design district number six, which we heard tonight, so, um.
That is the near noble gas, right?
Yeah, we don't have any approval.
Oh, right.
This is not to approve an S, a, a, um, SEP or a site development plan. This is just for a, um, zone change to allow STD number six.
I'll make a motion to approve ZCA RAA 2023-12 file.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
I don't have anything to say.
All right, we have no discussion, then we'll call the roll, starting, um, with, um, Condon.
Uh, Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Aini, yes.
Westland, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Five oh.
Passes. So we'll move on now to, um, minutes, we have meeting minutes, January 4th, 2024, meeting minutes from our last meeting. Do we have copies of that?
No.
Yeah, no.
As you should, but I believe the last side of me.
Make a motion to approve those minutes and traffic.
I have a motion. A motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah.
We have two, uh, extension requests, I'm going to have Kathleen go over those two requests.
The first request is for 10 and 36 Main Street, uh, for an RAA, uh, ZCA 2023-02, file number 1025E. Uh, Solely Engineering is requesting an extension for filing of the special exception permit, uh, to further develop the plans. Original requirement date for the submission for a special exception permit as part of the RAA slash ZCA approval was February 4th, and they are requesting a six-month extension to August 4th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions? If not, we'll call the roll, starting with, um, Commissioner Condon.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Aini, yes.
Westland, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Next extension.
The next extension is, uh, for 846 Main Street, uh, special exception permit SCP 2023-06, file number 1654A. Um, on behalf of Gondel Corporation, Solely Engineering is requesting an extension for filing a special exception permit, slight development plan approval, um, to allow the commission, uh, additional time to endorse. So when they mean commission, they, they mean our office. So there's a little bit of a lap, that there is a gap in staff. Um, we asked for an extension to give staff a little more time to, um, resume it. So the original date of filings, uh, was October 15th. They already requested one three-month extension to January 15th. How they're, however, they're requesting additional 45 days to February 29th.
Yeah.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions on this? If not, we'll call the roll, starting with Commissioner Condon.
Condon, yes.
Road, yes.
Aini, yes.
Westland, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Don't have much on correspondence. Um, I don't have any report, are there any commissioner reports?
I think everybody's done an amazing job.
That's fine.
Thank you very much. Kathleen, do you have any other reports?
Uh, I do not at this moment.
Done, Kathleen.
Okay, well, I want to thank everyone for, um, helping me through my vacation here and I will be back in a couple of weeks.
Oh, so you're not going to be here Tuesday?
No.
Are you remoting in?
I'll be closer, but I'll be zooming in, yes.
Tuesday?
We have a Turkey Roost is Tuesday. So yes, I do have that. Turkey Roost is Tuesday, um, it's the only item on the agenda. Um, and just, uh, we've already had preliminary discussions about the, when the next, uh, special meeting for that would be. And I believe we had said, uh, potentially the beginning of March.
Correct.
Um, so we wouldn't meet for all of February to give our consultants some time, uh, to review the application. Um, and, and so we're thinking beginning of March. We may require another extension, uh, we have 65 days over the total of the project. We've used three already, um, so we'll have some additional time.
So we have a meeting Tuesday?
We have a meeting Tuesday.
That's all.
Uh, and, uh, just for full disclosure, staff did go onsite, uh, earlier this week on Wednesday. Um, and we walked the site with legal counsel, uh, that was here, um, and that they will be consulting, uh.
Family road trip?
Family road trip.
Beautiful. Mike, we're done, motion to adjourn.
Okay, so everybody on the stance, this special meeting next week is just for that one development.
I, I, Captain. 201 Turkey Roost, yes.
And we do have a counsel that's going to help us just with this one development.
Correct, motion to adjourn, oh, hold on.
Wait, wait, there's questions down there.
I didn't even know that we were having a meeting, but that's fine. Um, well, that's, that's actually not true because one of our meetings, Phil, Andy, that's a separate package and you, and there was phone calls, you didn't meet. Okay.
And the big packet that you have?
It's for the meeting Tuesday.
That is for the meeting on Tuesday.
So do we get to the site before the meeting?
So staff is currently working through site plan procedures for the commissions. We are consulting legal and we are also consulting, uh, Yukon Clear did commissioner training. I don't know if that was one of the ones that you guys took this past year. Um, but they have a section related to site visits. Based on the advisement that we are being given and that we have done the research for, um, we believe that it should be announced at an actual meeting as compared to doing the site earlier. And we are also being, um, very, very clear cut on what's considered to be a public meeting and not a public meeting. So if the whole commission would like to go, you're going to have quorum. It's going to be a public meeting, that means we need to coordinate with the owner. That also means we have to make sure the public is aware of the meeting, not in the sense of the same requirements of noticing a public hearing. It's a public meeting, not a public hearing. Um, or in its extension of the public hearing, if we've already opened the public hearing, which is probably what we will have done for this. Um, we just have to make sure the public is aware, they can access the site and coordinate with the owners that they're aware that the public has the ability to access the site. Um, and it's really just the lay of the land, you're just going to see the lay.
So you just went a couple at a time.
Yeah, in the past, we've scheduled two at a time together.
So the issue is, is if you are scheduling it at two of the time, you run the risk of the wrong two people going and then it's considered quorum for subcommittee, um, which is a concern that then can be as quorum and it should have been noticed as a public meeting. Also, if it's over the life of the application you go to at a time, there has been advisement that technically the collectiveness of all of that could be considered a public meeting, um, because everybody is going to that. So this is going to be a controversial project. We want to make sure that we are following advisement for site meetings, um, as they relate to potentially public meetings. Again, we are putting procedures together, we are asking those specific questions to legal, um, in hope that they can get advisement for us. Um, but it's been advised that the two at a time is a very, very great area and that we need to be, um, thoughtful of that. We do have counsel specifically for this project. I'd happily ask him specifically that question and make sure that we are doing this, uh, in, under the requirements of FOIA and state statutes.
When do you, when do you think a site visit is going to be? When do you think a site visit is going to be?
So if you want to do a site visit, let's talk about it at the next meeting in the public and then we can, uh, schedule it at that point. I can preliminarily, uh, talk to the applicant and see if they, um, I'm sure they'd be amenable to it. I don't know if you guys have specific times and dates that you normally do sit walks, um, that we can start to float sometimes preliminarily and then actually schedule it during the meeting.
Usually it's just at restaurants.
Usually it's just what?
Usually I just show up.
In the past, it was a Saturday, it's scattered times. Uh, at other times, there's just one or two of us that went at different hours. Or we went with Rick, like one person went with Rick, so there was a, two of us there.
Correct, for liability reasons, yeah. Normally you would want town staff to accompany you. Um, we are, are trying to do that with other commissions as well and so we're trying to create a standard for, for all commissions. Um, but going one at a time within the same day or two at a time within the same day could be considered to be quorum. Um, in the essence, that a quorum amount of the planning board was visiting the site and therefore the public should have had the same opportunity to, to visit.
All right, cool. Mike?
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, can we adjourn?
A motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, guys.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.